All right, good afternoon, everybody. We have a very aggressive agenda today, and this is a very important item, so we're going to get started right on time. This is the City of Desert Hot Springs Regular Meeting of the City Council. The City Council is serving as a successor agency to the Redevelopment Agency Board for March 19th, 2019. This is our 3:30 study session. We will be followed with our closed session after our study session today. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts.
Present.
Councilmember Gardner.
Present.
Councilmember Zavala. Mayor Protem Pai.
Present.
And Mayor Mattis.
Present. Do we have any confirmation from Mayor's Councilmembers of all there right now? She's in the room. She's here. I'm just going to outline how our program's going to go today. Our study session is that we're going to continue from our -- when did we meet, Luke? Was it October?
October 24th.
October. We're going to continue our strategic planning. When Councilmember McKee, who's in the audience with us today, was here with us, we started strategic planning for the future of cannabis, strategic mapping for the future of Desert Hot Springs. So, we're going to continue along those lines. After we're done with the conversation, we're going to take some time to do some public comments. If you want to speak in public comments, I am going to ask that you do fill out a blue card and fill that in so that it gives me enough time, enough notice to know how many people would want to speak in public comments. There's no blue cards back there. We'll get some back there. We'll have some time for that. And that'll give me enough time to know when I need to cut Greg off and say, hey, we need to get to public comments. I want to make sure we get those in before we head to closed session. Again, this is our strategic plan study session. This is mapping the future of our cannabis strategies. I'm going to give it over to Luke Rini, our Deputy City Manager, who's going to introduce the items.
Good evening, Mayor and Mayor Protem and City Councilmembers. So, as you said, the purpose of today's study session is to continue the process now that the moderator and staff have had time to compile the information that was discovered during the last study session. So, I'd like to introduce Greg Bellomo, who the city hired to facilitate the strategic planning process. He's documented items that reached council consensus at the last study session and has been working with city staff to formulate those items into a strategy map that includes your vision, goals, and initiatives. And after he walks through the details, we are asking the City Council to adopt the proposed cannabis strategic plan. So, without further ado, here is Greg Bellomo.
Thanks, Luke. Everybody able to hear me okay? All right. So, picking up with the introduction here, we met back in October, on October 24th, for you all to have a chance to speak with each other about your vision for the continued growth of the cannabis industry here in Desert Hot Springs. Before that meeting, I had the chance to speak with each of you. Councilmember Gardner, you were not yet sitting. Instead, it was Mr. McKee. And I had a chance for each of you to tell me what it was that you thought were priorities. And then, we designed a session where you could speak with each other. The other source of input to that session was a task force that you all had commissioned with Industry. And Industry came with eight unique ideas. So, we reviewed your ideas. We reviewed the ideas from Industry. We took all of that input and tried to put it into a cogent strategy map, which is basically just a roadmap for how you'll go about considering all of the things that are available to you and progressing those in the coming months and years. So, we have architected a single-page strategy map that takes you, as Luke said, from vision through your operating principles to distinct goals and discrete initiatives that progress you toward those goals. So, we're going to review that with you today, and I'm going to give you a fair warning. I'd like to know what questions you have on it, what comments you have, what feedback, and I'm going to ask for that kind of in advance so that, much like the mayor was indicating around public comment, we have a sense of how many issues we have to cover. That way, we'll make sure that each issue gets a fair discussion. So, we've got the one-page strategy map that is supported by a series of initiative plans. So, for each of the nine initiatives that we came up with, there's a one-pager that says, what are we trying to accomplish? What would the outputs be? What kind of resources will we need? And what's a quick start action plan? So, I'm going to walk you through that, but that's sort of the sum total of the material that we have to review today. So, the objective, as Luke said, is to gain consensus on that roadmap. If you believe that this is comprehensive, if it has the right elements in it, then we can proceed to implementation and actually begin considering and progressing toward all of the goals that you've stated through the initiatives that we've outlined. Clear enough? Okay. So, to allow 20 minutes for public comment, we have about 70 minutes for discussion amongst us before you all go into -- do you call it private session? Closed session, thank you. So, that kind of gives the rough amount of time that we have. Our goal, again, is consensus. We define that as, I'm okay going forward with this. Right? Doesn't mean I agree with absolutely everything, but it means I'm happy to support it going forward. Okay? Any questions on the objective and the agenda? Great. So, showing on the screens now is the draft strategy map. And as you'll see, it takes you from your vision through a set of operating principles or basically shared commitments for how we will pursue that vision. And then, it has four goals. And each of those goals will progress toward those through a set of initiatives, and you'll see those as bullet points beneath there. So, what I'd like to do is ask, what questions do you have? What areas would you like to discuss? And what I've created here is just a place to log all of those so that I understand whether we have two issues to discuss or 22 issues, and we make sure that we keep you on track to that 70 minutes. Clear enough? Okay. So, then certainly entertain any questions on the process, but also if you have questions or suggestions for edits on the strategy map, let me know what those are. I'll roster those right here, and then, we can go through and consider each one. Right? So, who wants to go first?
What's important to me is the canotourism to enhance the spa city. I think that's important going forward is that we really need to identify that so that our spas know which direction they're able to go. It's going to not only promote their business, but dispensary business and cultivation business with tourism in the future. So, I think it encompasses a really important goal for us.
And are there specific issues within that initiative that you'd like to raise, or are you just looking forward to moving forward on it?
No. No specifics.
Okay.
Let me jump in if I can. I would second what the mayor said. And I would probably tie the two between that and strengthening the city's long-term financial position. While this is a boon and a wonderful thing right now, we need to have a much broader base in our city going forward, long-term, and I want to see that strengthened. And if I were to prioritize them, I'd put those two as tied as one and two. Business-friendly city as three, and public safety as four, just my two cents. And as far as any particulars in there, the long-term financial position stuff is, what can we do to broaden our base? We don't end up relying too much on the cannabis industry for our long-term financial success as a city. And it's the tourism end of it. What can we do specifically to enhance tourism, to bring people here, to encourage them to come? Do we do bus tours? Do we do sampling? Do we do tasting rooms? Do we do consumption lounges? Those kinds of things. So, those are the things that we need to, as a council, discuss and debate and decide the best track going forward.
Thank you.
The first thing I noticed is that on each one of these proposals, how many are there?
There are nine.
Nine. I don't see any budget numbers tied to these, and some are some very specific programs that are going to have costs. I won't go through and cover each one of those. But somebody that was here for the very difficult times we faced in 2013, I got to make sure that we're keeping an eye on that ball because I don't want to go through that again. Which would bring me to a specific question on, it's called a goal, ensure competitive tax rates. And I see the review of tax competitiveness, and this schedule is put off to, I guess, Q4 means quarter four. And I don't see how you can put that subject off until quarter four at the same time you're implementing in quarters three, two, and one, or whatever we're at, these other expenses because they are very much linked. So, we need to have a look at, a very serious look at that. And some of this other stuff, where is it? Yeah, enable, explore allowable zones for cannabis hotel spa uses. And that discussion, if I understand this correctly, is put up also to quarter four. And my understanding is, is that we were being approached on this subject maybe a year ago? So, we're already a year behind to push this off to quarter four is too far back.
So, a point of clarity on that one. That's the schedule on which we believe that to be complete. It doesn't necessarily mean that it begins then. So, there are things in there, if you think about it kind of like a Gantt chart. They may need to begin now in order to be complete.
Some of these other ones are complete sooner than that, so I think the point still stands. And then, some of these, like increase awareness of responsible cannabis use. Well, I need to figure out why, how that is our city's responsibility, but my apprehension there is there was a suggestion by the Palm Springs Unified School District that we kick in $100,000 on that specific subject. And the premise there was that I didn't agree with as far as the Palm Springs Unified School District. So, I need some more clarification before I could sign on to what's the initiative there before I just say yes. So, hopefully in this time, we're going to get a detailed explanation of that. But then, it also have questions over the cost and benefit of that to the taxpayers and how that ends up being something that we would review. So, I'll just leave my -- let's see if we can get another one here. So, I'll just leave my comments at that for now, but those are my initial comments on this.
Good. Thanks.
I would just say the same. I think, you know, really talking about the canotourism and strengthening our long-term financial position. Then, of course, public safety and being business-friendly. So, my understanding is we're actually going to go through every section, right?
So, what we'd like to do is understand where on that map it's unclear to you what it means. So, you know, does --
Oh, what's unclear? I thought you were talking about prioritizing which ones we want to talk about first or the most.
Actually, I think if we're getting to a list of 10 or so, I just want to make sure if we had 50 items--
That we get to those.
--that we get to all of them. Okay.
One other thing I thought I remembered if I were you done, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We were talking specifically about some type of program, economic development, jobs, maybe in response to some type of tax credit program. And we had asked, specifically asked that our consultant, Michael Bush, come back with a few formulas, which I had hoped to see in this, and I don't see anything along those lines. It's very important to me that if we're going to offer any type of tax reduction, which I understand is an open question, although I favor it, that if we're going to put in any type of tax reduction, that it'd be tied to performance in typical economic development sense of creation of jobs. So, I didn't see that in here, so I was disappointed in that.
What other questions or issues do we want to put up on the board? Good for now? Okay. We will entertain others, but again, I wanted to get a sense of how many topics that we So, there's a cluster around economic development, tax incentives, tax competitiveness. There's some discussion around the relative return on investment of awareness of cannabis use and what the premise might be underneath that. Then, there are, at a goal level, the topics of canotourism and long-term financial position. My question back to you, Mayor and Mr. Gardner, are there specific issues that you'd like to dig into on those during our session?
What was the question again?
There are specific issues as far as how the initiatives would achieve the goals that you all -- well, what I interpreted you to mean, how I documented this, do you believe that the initiatives that are listed are the right ones to achieve the goals as So, are there specific questions that would help you make that determination?
Are you asking the specifics about canotourism? Is that what you're asking?
You and Mr. Gardner both spoke about canotourism and the long-term financial position as being two very, very critical goals.
Yes.
And I just want to make sure that you have the information, you feel like you have the information, or you believe that the initiatives as described are going to progress you toward those goals that are--
Well, if you're asking if what's on here is clear as to what is -- you know, I think you hit every target. I sat in on the planning session back in October in the audience and listened in on a lot of that, and I think what you've hit here, target audience, brand uses, labeling brands, compliance scope, those kind of things. And as far as spa uses, zoning updates, those kind of things, I think you hit everything. I didn't see anything that stuck out to me as missing from that, from my perspective.
Good. Thank you. That was the question.
Ms. Bell?
And I think maybe just having that conversation, I think zoning was on there, and that's something that I've asked the city manager about, you know, specifically, what do we mean by that? And I think, you know, based on the conversation I had with the city manager, it was more along the lines of, you know, where do we and don't we want to set specific land aside for other types of development? And one thing that comes to mind is our recent proposal to, you know, try to convert some of our commercial area into industrial along Palm. And so, that, you know, having those conversations as to where do we want to ensure that we set that, you know, land aside specifically for other things that are not cannabis-related.
Okay. Thanks.
What's important to me is when it comes to the canotourism is really developing a Desert Hot Springs brand. This was brought to our attention when this industry first came there. It came to the city that it would be great to say, you know, somewhere made in Desert Hot Springs. And what does that logo look like? What does that branding look like? How does that work with the industry? So, that was, you know, you have it here, which is great, and I think that's important to me also. So, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah. And so, maybe that's a good example. If we believe that the roadmap is sufficient and it has the right elements in it, we're progressing toward the right goals, then you all can basically commission the group to move forward with that. We still have these other items to deal with, but that's kind of a good example of if you feel like the group captured your vision or encapsulated a way to progress towards your vision, then that's what we're hoping for today.
Good. So, but that, my understanding is that's going to come back to us with specific asks of the council--
Yes.
--requests before we -- I don't want to sit there and say, yeah, I agree with all this, and then, it just launches this program where we're spending thousands of dollars to create some new logo and whatever else, educational materials and everything else I see in here. I want to, I want to, you know, we're having a general study session here is my understanding, not that this is a green light to go ahead and just run with this because there's not enough detail here for me to read anything.
Yeah. Let me go ahead and take you to the next page for how we might pursue implementation, and then, we can dig into these items. So, what I propose is that we have this in a set of tiers. So, you all approve the vision, the operating principles, and the goals. You empower the city manager to design those initiatives and propose to you all the resources that'd be necessary to get to those. Okay? At that point, you basically say, great, go forth. Then, the third part that would be your obligation is, as items come back to you through a variety of channels. And what I mean by that is, if you go out and say, commission a study around brand, well, that needs to come back to you for adoption and approval, what you have. If you commission something that says, we need to change the municipal code, well, you have a mechanism by which that happens. Right? If you say add people, there are mechanisms by which you approve budgets that allow that. So, not to confuse the answer, simply that all this does is empower the group to go forward on the plan and bring things back to you for you to approve or disapprove.
What are my tax questions? It's Q4 before there's a specific proposal coming back to us.
That's what that plan says, so we need to discuss whether you think that needs to be accelerated.
We've got a whole lot of people in this community and across the state approaching that subject. I think we need to settle that sooner than later. Berkeley just lowered their retail sales tax from 10% down to 5% to try and counter the, what they're calling the black market. And the, what is it, 37% price disadvantage just on tax alone, and you start throwing in the other non-competitive factors of regulatory costs, and I don't see how that can be put off until Q4. I think that should be a very salient point here, especially with the concerns that are expressed from the industry. I'm surprised the tax force that was put together didn't propose a more stronger emphasis, more emphasis on looking at the taxes.
Okay. Ms. Pai, you had raised your hand.
I just wanted to say, based on this, this is how I took it. I misunderstood it in the beginning because I thought we were going to go back to the specific stuff that came to us. And I find out, okay, so, we're doing this. The specific stuff will come back to us, including exactly what he's asking for. So, this is fine with me, even the stuff that's quarter this and quarter that because that can change. But you got the subjects in there. So, I'm okay with that. I'm just ready to go on.
And I would actually echo that. I was a little confused with it as well. So, this morning, when I was speaking to Chuck, I was like, okay, Chuck. So, if we say yes to this, are we automatically saying yes to things that we haven't actually taken an individual vote on? And that's not the case. It's just pretty much, this is just establishing our overall goal for the city and then our individual, like, markers, so to speak, that are going to measure our success in meeting these overall goals will come back individually to the council.
Yeah. Like any system, you create a plan, and then, you work the plan. So, today, it's about, do you believe the plan is comprehensive? Do you believe it has the right items in it? There are a number of things up here that we'll talk about right now unless you have other items to add to the list. I think we'll just take them in order and address whether we should be accelerating some of these or whether we might have the sequence wrong. Okay?
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. Well, let's take them kind of from this side to that side. What we have, Mr. Betts, you'd mentioned, you know, you want to make sure that we're not, and I'm paraphrasing, so please correct me if I'm wrong. You don't want to return to the dark days of not having any money. And so, you would be concerned about green-lighting a number of things without a budget estimate on what it costs to actually green-light that thing. Fair?
Yeah.
Okay? Do you others share that?
Yeah.
Okay? So, if we were to bring back to you specific, or if the city team were to bring back to you specific budget items on each of the items that are material, right, from a budgeting standpoint, that's the correct action then? Is that what I understand? Okay.
I would say material, but also as whatever subject you're bringing to us, give us a full accounting of that as you bring them to us.
I think what I'd be looking for would be, you got this whole plan here, and there should be something here that says what it costs, and that that's going to be factored into the budget and that we know that, and that each component has a cost. I just, there's a significant page missing, and that's the one of cost. So, I wouldn't say that just take each one of these and run with it. I would say, you know, bring it back as a comprehensive action plan with a budget and a cost for each item, and let us know what we're agreeing to and not agreeing to. And then, staff, take that as direction, finally, okay, go ahead, no surprises, everybody said spend that money.
Okay.
Hey, Greg, can I interject real quick?
Yes.
Each of these items, regardless of there's going to be any expenditure of funds, you know there's going to be expenditure of staff time, but regardless of whether they're going to be an expenditure of general fund budget, we're going to bring them back to you in totality with all actual data, not anecdotal information, and provide that to you in a way that you can make a educated decision on each and every one of them. So, to have an additional budget here when we don't know what these each are going to play out as is impossible at this point. But each and every one of these, as they come forward, and we're going to take them individually because we don't want to have, we don't want to make any mistakes on the road. We will do so one by one to the council, and then, the council, of course, will make the decision as to how we move forward at that point.
Any more discussion around the needed budgets? Okay. Next item was around tax competitiveness, and Mr. Betts already shared a bit of his opinion around the urgency for that and other items that are related. What other discussion around tax competitiveness, which is currently sequenced to be completed by Q4 of this year in the Initiative Action Plan? Other thoughts on that?
We can get information prior to Q4, and we need that information. And part of it is what it costs the industry and what it is going to cost Desert Hot Springs.
I'm just going to add that it's a conversation, obviously, that needs to be had. It's a concern from the industry, it's a concern from us, but we have to be cautious about it. When it comes to taxation, you don't want to be that city that starts to undercut, and the next city starts to undercut, and the next city starts to undercut. So, there has to be some real analysis done, not the rumor mill, not the, I had someone tell me that your taxes were too high. I need to see data. And so, that's something that we have to discuss. Can we do it before Q4? I believe so.
Other people's feelings on that?
Yeah, that's good. I would agree with the data. Emphasis on the data.
Ideally, we could bring that up. We're going to be starting the budget stuff too soon. I don't know how realistic it is to get that in so that we can throw that into this year's budget, but we can certainly aim for that if we can.
Forgive my ignorance, I don't know your budget cycle. When would that be?
July, July 1, it gets adopted.
Currently, we're in a two-year budget. July 1, or towards the end of this year, we'll be making adjustments for next year and to clean up the balance of this year. As far as giving the council an idea of what different options are available based on the information that's been provided to staff and reduction of taxes or how that will impact our general fund budget, we can certainly supply that ahead of time. As you know, the city managers of all cities in the Coachella Valley meet on a regular basis, especially those who have any marijuana-type businesses or the industry at all in their community, and discuss tax rates. And we all collectively have agreed that as this moves forward, we will take a look at it and ensure that each city is being responsible to the other. So, that's the other issue involved in that. So, and then, we already have in progress, as you'll see on, let's see, it's page, I can't read that, nine. Page nine, that although the review tax competitiveness is the fourth quarter of 2019, that we can clearly move that up, but exploring upsizing infrastructure programs, that's already in progress, progress right now, and pursuing mutually attractive tax incentive programs are in progress right now. So, because these-- So because these are complex and they do have a significant impact on our general fund budget, we want to ensure that we have all the data collected and brought to you, as well as what the other cities in the valley are doing, prior to bring it to the council. So you yourself, once again, can make an educated decision as to how this will not only impact the industry, as it's been told to us, but how it will impact the city's general fund budget and us moving forward.
I'm going to just quickly interject that there is a school of thought that says it won't, it won't hurt the general fund, it'll actually enhance it to have the industry in our city be more competitive. And it's not always just a dollar-for-dollar exchange on those things. If you've got more economic activity, because you have businesses here, you'll get more revenue into the city. If you have people who are not moving here, or people who are folding under the weight of the taxation or aren't doing it, I mean, you can collect 100% of zero and it's still nothing. You may be better off to be collecting a smaller amount from a vibrant, robust industry that's providing a good tax base and job base. So that just, you know, and I certainly appreciate the need to take a detailed look at how this will hit the budget. Just hoping we get that analysis that it'll have both sides of that coin.
All right, so from where I stand, what I, what I'm understanding is there's work underway right now. We will, to the degree, to the degree possible, you would like that work to be accelerated, but you want it done correctly with puts and takes on both sides, but not simply an assumption that, you know, it would be only negative or only positive. Right? Balanced view. Okay? Any more talking, anymore around tax incentives and competitiveness?
We could roll in development demands. As we talk about tax incentives, we talk about development demands and the process. I was just reading the next page. And this has been a big discussion about how to develop the city of Desert Hot Springs in a very friendly way. We've obviously taken some steps in our community development department to, to bring in more staff to help this process, but I want to make sure we keep that to forefront. Today, it might be, you know, cannabis cultivation growing, but tomorrow it's manufacturing. And, and we want to make sure that the development process continues to be friendly and easy. I guess I can't use the word easy, development's not easy, but very friendly and make sure that it's streamlined.
Thank you. All right. The next topic for discussion is around the cost benefit of increasing awareness of cannabis use. Mr. Betts, this was your item, wasn't, was it not? Okay. this is page 16. Let's advance to there. Give you all a chance to read that for a second. And then let's talk about whether you believe the premise is accurate. And then would you suggest changes to the objectives, the outputs, or the actions?
I think education is important. It's a piece of this. We've, we've had requests from Palm Springs Unified School District. We've had requests from religious organizations. We've had requests from multiple other people who talk about using the product responsibly, educating the youth of our community, educating the seniors of our community. That most recently I had seniors come to me in my employment and ask me, where do I go to get this stuff for my knee? I hear it's good for you, you know, these, these creams. So it's a full educational opportunity that I think we need to take a portion of our funding from this industry in the future and make sure we have a good strategic plan when it comes to educating.
I would agree. I do like the idea of us having our own educational materials and being to put them up like on our city website, you know, just, you know, FYI, if, if your son or daughter accidentally ingests, you know, marijuana, here's who you call. Or like general information like that, I would think it would be nice to have on our city website.
Is, is there any other agency in the state that is going to be taking up this mission? That can cover this expense? I don't exactly understand what is meant by, you know, this program here. I don't, I've looked at it a bunch of times trying to figure out specifically what somebody wants to do. Is the suggestion that we go along with that proposal by Palm Springs Unified School District? Because that was a horrible-
Why are you so focused on Palm Springs Unified?
Well, it was a horrible proposal, that's why.
That's, it's nothing in here, so I just wanted to make sure-
Okay, so as long as I got that clear.
We don't get off the rails here. That's not even in the proposal here, so.
And for our last budget adjustment, we can't do it.
Yeah, okay. So what, what, I don't, I guess I'm just trying to find out, the question was, what are we specifically doing here? Are we spending money on this? Are we just gathering information, putting it on the website? That's fine, if that doesn't cost much.
One of the goals of the council was to ensure that we also put a public safety component in this. And public safety is not just enforcement. It's also education and other components involved in that. So if we're going to send out an education model, if we're going to have an education marketing program that will come before the council, the council will either approve or deny that. And then that will be moving forward. It has nothing to do with Palm Springs Unified School District. It's an internal portion of the public safety request made by this council.
Okay, so what are we educating along? Because I missed that when we were requesting that.
Sorry, I have my assistant in my ear.
I'm trying to figure out what we're, what we're-
I have my assistant in my ear right now telling me what we're going to be doing. It, it has to do with, not only, you know, you confuse the crap out of me. It has to, it has to do with the fact that we are going, that the part of the deal was that we were going to, instead of being involved in programs that have not shown any positive results in the past, for us to say, okay, these are legal places for you to be able to consume in our city. These are what you can and can't do in reference to, you know, local ordinances and state ordinances, how to ingest responsibly, have, you know, a, either an Uber, a Lyft, or have a responsible driver. I'm just thinking of items that relate directly to that. And I'm sure there'll be more once Steph sits down and goes through it all. But I think that at this point, and forgive me for, for being mumbling through this a little bit, but it has nothing to do with the school district's program. This is part of the public safety portion that the council wanted us to take a look at. So we want to make sure that there's an education component for our citizens and people that visit our community, especially if we're going to look at hotels and other options, tasting rooms, things of that nature. There has to be some sort of responsible component for them to say, okay, at least the city has done this. So if Joe Blow gets in a car, baked out of his gourd and winds up in a traffic collision, we've done our due diligence ahead of time as well.
Okay, so I didn't think you muddled through that. I think that was quite clear. You did a good job. Thanks. That makes me feel better. I thought, I might add one thing, if you're going to put something in there, is the dangers of buying untested products on the, from the black market rather than from a proper source and that by the way you do that, you can get arrested because that's not legal. Or whatever you need to do, something to help, okay, thank you.
I really want to reiterate that this isn't all about public safety when it comes to how are we going to arrest somebody for doing something bad? Again, the educational component comes back to how we educate individuals that aren't understanding what CBDs are and what THC is. And how can they get into, how can we have a dispensary show up and do a seminar at the senior center on showing them the difference on how they can handle pain management and those types of things? So, and then when it comes to the youth, you know, why you should be more responsible and think about how you're going to use this in the future. If you don't need it medically, why do you think you could use, you should use it recreationally? And how do you use it responsibly? So there's a big wide variety there of educational opportunities. And I believe that's where the council was going in the future, is for us to develop a full educational program based around all those components.
Great. Other thoughts on that topic? Then the last one that came out of the first round was around a program for economic development. Making sure that we had a good understanding of the incentives and what the formula for any kind of tax break would be as pertained to job creation, right? If you were going to offer an incentive, you would need to have some kind of long-term lasting, well-paying jobs.
Well, let me take that for Mr. McKee and I. We tried to introduce an item a while back that we would give incentives to hiring local. And I, I think that's a, a piece that needs to be discussed again, I truly do. We lost our battle on that, but I do think it's an incentive. We want the median income of Desert Hot Springs to come up. We know that jobs in this industry can pay more than, than minimum wage. We want to educate those individuals and we want to be able to give incentives for development. How does that all correlate? And so I think it's, discussion needs to happen again. When it comes to economic development, what are the, what I call the fallout businesses from this industry? How do we make sure that we have a nice tourism component to sustain those types of extra businesses in our community? So a plan around all of that needs to be developed.
Other thoughts or comments on that one? I'm going to ask everybody's patience, just one minute. I need to ask the mayor a procedure question.
No, I think, I think it's going quickly because-
Thank you all for your patience. So my question to the mayor was, in situations like this, do you vote? Or is it, you know, in a study session, is it just consensus? And he told me that that's more what it is. So I'll ask the council again, are there any other issues that you want to address amongst yourselves before we open public comment?
So what we can do is we can go into public comments and then that could, yeah, produce some more conversation about this. Did you have a comment?
I just want to, well, we have some time at the end where we can each just give a summation of our thoughts.
Sure, absolutely.
Great, thanks.
So would 10 minutes be enough time to preserve at the end? I'll just do a little timekeeping.
Anybody would like to speak? I'd like to try to figure out how, how long we're going to be doing this. So if you would fill out a blue card, I appreciate it in the back. Right now, I've got six speakers, so that gives us about three minutes per speaker, two to three minutes per speaker. So we're looking at about 15 minutes here. I've got another couple more coming up. So about 20 minutes is what we talked about. So I'm going to start with Simone Sandoval. I got Greta Carter next anyway, so it kind of works out, huh?
Greta Carter, Desert Hot Springs, also from High Road Consulting. We currently have 19 active businesses under contract with us in the cannabis world. We have another 25 that we're negotiating to give you a sense of my background of what we're representing here. Love that you guys have put this strategic plan to the paper and want to talk briefly about some of the things that I've heard from the panel or from the, from you folks today. Tax rates is paramount, as we already can see in the industrial area. We have businesses struggling today. Some of them have already shuttered and some of the partnerships are already in court. So in order, and we know as an industry that we're going to see about about a 70% fail rate the first year. So the key for me as a resident here is how do we make sure that the businesses here are the ones that are successful and remain competitive? I love the conversation around the tax reduction and the tax incentives is paramount. Fourth quarter, if we don't see that relief, I don't know how they're going to maintain competitiveness. What I also want to suggest that is diversification within this industry is an incredible opportunity. Not just diversification to this, for the city and other businesses, but that we aren't reliant only on cultivation. And in order to have success with that diversification, some of the other things that we would like to see, which you're already talking about, is cannabis tourism. And it's like, how do we set up cannabis tourism for our, our hoteliers? To efficiently be able to transition to offering that service, why not compromising their ABC licenses? And what we would like to recommend to you is that you would consider a special application opposed to them going through a complete, what do you call it when you do a complete rezoning? But if we could get a special permit that would allow cannabis use in the existing hotel zones. And, and that would accelerate their timeline. We have two hotels that are eagerly looking for relief in that regard. Then that would be diversification. Another form of diversification for the health of the city would be to allow expansion of the commercial zone to include distribution operations with limitations. Totally get that we don't want semis driving up and down Palm Drive. That's not what we're proposing. But if we could open up to distribution, again, we're not reliant on just the cultivation zone or cultivation business for, for success. And we're asking for that to change the municipal code, to expand the cannabis zones. But we're not, if, we don't know if that's the easiest solution, but we are asking for the city's help on trying to find a solution because we have active businesses trying to expand. Okay, we, that would also include the testing facilities. That would further diversify us as well. Love what you guys are doing, love the progress on it. Of course, it's just not fast enough. And the industry is on steroids. They call it in dog years, which is true. One year passes, it's like seven years in this industry. So love that you're talking about trying to get things moved up from fourth quarter. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Glickman, followed by Catherine Dickerson.
Hi, my name is Steve Glickman. I'm with High Road Consulting Group. I wanted to thank you for all participating and bringing up cannabis, which is a huge industry out here. I had a couple of points I wanted to make about taxes first. I agree with Councilmember Betts, about the idea of lowering taxes and implementing that in a sooner basis. I think, as my colleague Greta spoke about, cannabis industry is moving so quickly, we need to act quickly as well. There's, there's a bill currently in State Assembly to lower the state's tax rates to lower it so that the black market would not be encouraged. Right now, the black market is still flourishing. We need to encourage the white market and have all businesses that are legal be flourishing with their business profits. I also want to talk about the expansion of non-cultivation areas such as distribution, testing labs. I do think that there needs to be some changes with regard to zoning and the municipal code with reliance on encouraging these outside businesses to come in. Also, I like the idea of having this Desert Hot Springs be the business city that is known for cannabis-friendly activities. If you guys lower the taxes, allow these zones to open up, then you're going to be known throughout the valley and possibly throughout the state of California as one of the most business-friendly cannabis cities around. And I think that just helps everyone around. You can do incentives for local hires and tax incentives would be great for businesses wanting to come here. Thank you. And thank you for your time.
Catherine Dickerson, followed by Jocelyn King.
Great discussions going on. And this is a really good thing for the city to be going forward with where we're kind of taking those high-level ideas and say, yeah, we want to be a cannabis-friendly society and integrate it into more social venues, and here's how we're going to do it, which is fantastic. And one of those is the cannabis tourism. That's kind of the buzzword that's been going around and providing a way for folks to integrate that into society. We're working with the city right now on the cannabis farmers market, which is going to bleed into and be really just a general farmers market with a cannabis section, which would be great for the- which would be great for the city, great for local businesses, great for the valley in general. I think that's something that's not being done properly, other than at really COD and kind of the farmers marketing Palm Springs. So great to bring DHS on the map in that sense and kind of be the go-to location for the cannabis farmers market. Where, I mean, just like in Vegas with the underground, DHS is gonna be the SoCal and even California location where businesses come from far and wide to have a booth at these venues. Another thing with the taxes, I think with the educational component, there's a way to really intelligently do a co-mingling of that. So if you really want to get, you know, those cultivators lower taxes, make them put in service with the city. So if you want to hold educational seminars, they get X number of tax credits or dollars off per square foot if they host an educational seminar at a city-sponsored event. What's wrong with that? That allows folks to, you know, put time and money into the city where they're operating and allows them to also get a benefit. So it's like, you know, you take prisoners out and you have them clean up the streets. Same kind of, you know, theory there, you like make them work and give back to the city that they're operating in. Art in public places for industrial, I think we're slowly working towards revamping that. I think it needs to be used in a better manner, whether it's either educational or it's more of like a permanent installation of the desert ex- installments. I was talking to Rebecca about it today. That gets great tourism all over. I mean, it's only here for, you know, really a couple of weeks while the festivals are gearing up and hundreds and hundreds of people are going out in the middle of the desert and taking photos. So I think that could be capitalized instead of just putting money into different art in public places funds. And another thing is hemp, you guys gotta start talking about hemp with the farm bill in 2018 being passed. It's really, really important that that is now a discussion. One thing that people are really concerned about is the difference or the cross-pollination from hemp to cannabis. I have a white paper from a botanical scientist from UC Davis who literally did this for his PhD and he wrote a white paper explaining how that can be mitigated and how it actually wouldn't even happen with the difference between male and female plants, before I bore you all with the details. But there's a way to do it and I think the first step is providing a way for folks to come in and start manufacturing or processing and not necessarily growing to allow the initial hemp slew of folks to come on into the city.
Thank you. Jocelyn Kane, followed by Christopher Martinez.
Good afternoon, Jocelyn Kane, CVCAN. I just want to thank Desert Hot Springs for doing this work. This is the first cannabis strategy that I've seen anywhere, I think, in the state of California. So this is really a big deal. Catherine and I and Greta and a few other people came in the blazing hot summer to sit on the task force and super happy that a lot of the things that we talked about are in here. And we did, Councilman Betts talked quite a bit about taxes, so I think you got the gist of that. What I think this does is allows the community at large and DHS and the industry to know where you're headed. And I think that's the value of this. You are gonna tweak this and change this and staff's gonna come forward and we, hopefully, a CVCAN and the industry can help you sort of mold some of these really specific things as we go forward. But now we know what your vision is, I think in general. And if you do have sort of big problems with this, I'd love to hear this tonight or today. But in broad strokes, we see your vision. So accelerating the taxation conversation would be great. Asking the city to support AB 286, which is that state bill that is asking for a reduction in excise taxes from 15 to 11 would be great. And I don't know what the process is for the city to support a state bill, but that would be amazing. AB 286. So there's a bunch of other legislative actions at the state level, certainly can talk about that at some time. But I think we're here to say thank you very much and to ask you to continue down this road in a positive way and ask us for your help and engage us and bring that task force back together if you can on a regular basis in some way or institutionalize it so that we can continue to give us, give you our input. Thanks.
Thank you. Christopher Martinez, followed by Andrew Milks.
Good afternoon, my name is Christopher Martinez. I currently oversee compliance at Vet's Leaf and I also independent consult cannabis consultant. I think it's great what you guys are doing. I haven't seen this really done in any of the other cities that I've worked in. Planning out the industry is a great thing to do to make, to ensure that your industry is thriving. Another thing that you guys discussed about how to help or encourage operators to give back as far as education-wise. I know Riverside County and Chula Vista implement a community benefits or public benefits aspect to their application process. Within that application process, you could define what you want them to, what you would encourage them to do in order to give back. Aside from that, I'd also like to encourage, you guys are mentioning about employee or jobs for your locals, increasing the minimum, or increasing the income of, the average income of your community. One great way to do that, not only by providing them good jobs, but also giving them an opportunity to be business owners. I think it's great that you guys implemented the non-storefront. That's a great opportunity for a local, small operator to get into the industry. But currently, you guys only have it in your industrial zone, which is very difficult to get into. It's a large overhead. The definition of non-storefront retail doesn't, is the name of that type of license, but it doesn't define what it can, what it is. It basically states that you cannot have or be open to the public, but it doesn't prohibit you from having a non-storefront within a commercial zone. I also like to encourage you guys to look into a social equity program. Currently, the state under SB 1294 has reserved $10 million to go towards not only enforcement, but also business grants to social equity applicants. You guys would define what your social equity components are, implement into your ordinances. After that, you guys would be able to apply to the state to receive some of that $10 million that could go towards your enforcement and also towards some of your community members that are applying for those licenses. Currently, I think there's only about four or five cities or jurisdictions that have access or are eligible to apply for that right now. So I think that's a great opportunity. And another thing with the non-storefront, which are basically delivery services under Prop 215, there is a lot of small operators that were operating as deliver-only. This would not only allow your local residents to get into the industry, but it also would potentially attract businesses from the surrounding, surrounding cities. Because currently, right now, you guys are the only, only city that allows non-storefront licenses within your city. Everybody else, they'll allow you to deliver into their city, but you cannot operate within their city as a non-storefront. So it's a great opportunity to capitalize on. And I'd just like to applaud you guys for what you guys are doing. You guys are definitely ahead of the game and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Andrew Milks, followed by Paula Turner.
Good afternoon, City Council. Andrew Milks, President of Brown Dog Dispensary in Desert Hot Springs. Cool discussion. I wasn't really sure what we were to, you know, kind of saw the brief agenda and figured I'd show up and go over everything. I'm not gonna go through the taxing, I think everybody knows we want less taxes. That's, that's, it's not even just a desire, it's almost a requirement to keep going at some point. Consumption lounges, we've talked about tourism, I guess I'll put it more in the terms that the, I think the state's using right now, consumption lounges. There's consumption lounges in Cathedral City, there's consumption lounges in Palm Springs. I'm assuming very soon Desert Hot Springs will have consumption lounges and that'd be awesome. The hemp discussion, that is coming. I don't even know where that's gonna go. We're all over the hemp thing, very small scale, but still interested. I'm not even sure if we need licenses, but I still want to discuss it. I know there's, it's, it's, it's a new topic, it's coming, it's big. Maybe even bigger than recreational cannabis. And then finally, the equity program that was mentioned. I know there's a discussion in the valley right now for equity program. I looked at kind of the general requirements, some of the biggest cities are the first ones to discuss it. I know San Francisco's discussing it, I think Los Angeles, I want to say Oakland and San Francisco and San Diego. And I think Palm Springs is just starting the discussion as well. And it's interesting because I think I might have qualified. That would have been great. I mean, we would, we could have used any kind of help at all. Even if it's not for our group or myself, it's still great to see anybody that's on the lower end giving a hand up. There's so much Wall Street money and untouchable money for a lot of people that anything that you can do to help, especially those in your city or your county, I mean, the county is really what I'd like to see, Riverside County. I mean, Desert Hot Springs is small compared to the whole county, but that'd be great. Anything to help. Thanks.
Thanks, Andrew. Paula Turner, followed by Joe McKee.
Good afternoon. I don't want to be a broken record about the tax rates and the tax incentives. I think everybody has heard the message that we need to lower the taxes. And I just, just want to tell you that when you did lower the no manufacturing tax, my phone rang off the hook. And it is continuing to ring off the hook. And I don't want you to lower it to zero for cannabis tax, but I can, I can't stress enough, out of every 10 phone calls that I get, eight of them are manufacturing. They all have heard about no manufacturing tax in Desert Hot Springs. And I think with this whole plan that you have, if you, the most important thing is there's so many rumors out there. And every time that somebody calls, you have no power, you have no this, I have to re-educate them. And I think it's really important that in your plan, you really stress that you need to go out there and you need to market your city and tell your story and tell your successes and get the positive things out there that the city has to offer, and they will come. Just the whole manufacturing tax, if you can just start promoting that. If I had more buildings, they would be leased right now. I just, I keep on telling people, please build me buildings, and they will come. So I think you guys are doing a great job. I appreciate the study session and thank you so much.
Thanks, Paula. Joe McKee. Anyone else like to speak? I have no other blue cards, please hand them in.
This is a little different. I just wanted to mention cycles because one of the problems we had in 2013 when I, when I got on the council was we had people that had been optimistic about what was going to happen in the future and had budgeted that way. If you, if you look at the state budget, for example, two years before I got on the city council, the state budget was $85 billion. It's now, in this budget, I think $224 billion. It's almost three times bigger. And I think they have their own problems, but, but betting things on the cannabis tax and on the cannabis, cannabis industry beyond property tax and beyond possibly sales tax is something that's going to cause a problem in the future as far as I'm concerned. I think that's one of the reasons Councilperson Pi did what she did, which was put the 25% into, into reserve that we had. Now, I'm from industry in the, in, in the food processing industry for the most part. My whole job was trying to make sure things didn't break in factories and making things cheaper. Because the whole goal of any business, whether you have value-added or anything else, is to be low-cost producer. Because if you're a low-cost producer, you're gonna survive as your competitors fall by the wayside. And all of what they're saying here is this, sooner or later, the special taxation we have for marijuana will disappear. It is the only industry that I know of that has these sorts of taxes. If we had an auto company coming in, we would be giving them tax benefits to come in. We would not charge them a square footage tax or anything like that. This is in a lot of ways, as far as I'm concerned, a golden goose. We should take advantage of it right now. We should be cautious about making sure that we don't put people that have invested in our city at a disadvantage. There's no doubt about that. But, but my feeling is, in five years, it will be gone. And if we have a budget that assumes that it's going to be here in that period of time, we're gonna be in the same problem we were in in 2013. Now, one of the things I also thought about while I was just sitting here, I know the chief and the city manager, rightfully so, are interested in ensuring that we have increased regulation. There are several positions that are in the paper that I saw. What I would suggest is a different tact. And that is to band with the other cities in the valley and create a regional organization to do that. Two-fold. It'll make sure that all the players in the valley are under the same regulation. It'll make sure there won't be bad actors in specific corners because other cities will let them get away with stuff that, that we wouldn't. I think it'll be cost-effective too. I'm not sure that with the numbers of cannabis people that we have that the numbers of people that we would have to hire would be efficient. That's just a suggestion that's come through my weird brain. Again, my whole problem is, we have to look at this in the long run and make sure that we put everyone in a position that we can to be successful. So thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Is it Karina? Karina, your last name? Young, got it, okay. Come on up. Followed by Jason Pascoe.
Hi, everyone. I'm Karina Young. I'm relocating to Desert Hot Springs to participate in the cannabis community and help build it here. And one of the reasons why I'm personally coming here and why I kind of want to address the manufacturing is my, I've been cannabis for about five years. I'm familiar with all the different markets, but mostly the healing component of it. And we're not looking at that. And manufacturing offers that. Right now, my stepfather has stage-four brain cancer. We can't get the proper full-spectrum oil because nobody's making it, nobody's being allowed to. Or nobody's pressing forward for that health benefit because they just need to cultivate because they know that cultivation is where that big money is at. Well, it is, but we also have to think about the health component. And this could be a community that could offer those things, offer the THCA creams, offer the full-spectrum oil, offer something different to the cannabis, cannabis community that's not being offered at this time. So I'd like you to take those things into consideration because as you're going through and you're really making these laws and being the leader in the forefront and you want to come up under the underground and you want to be on top, you know, making sure that the surrounding communities aren't able to do things that you're not able to do and that you're staying competitive. You have a great community here that can really be built up. And all these jobs should be offered local to everybody in the community. Everybody that owns a dispensary here should stand up and put in their time as volunteering to the city. So that's something that I would like to offer. As I come into the community, you'll be seeing more of me and I hope that you take that manufacturing as more than just creating oil. It's actually creating something healing for people that desperately need it, that are dying, that can't find it, it's not being made. So I ask you to really look into more, offering more of the manufacturing here for those type of medications. That's really all I have to say on that.
Thank you and welcome to the community. Jason Pascoe, he's the last speaker card I have.
Last, but certainly not least, right, thank you very much. Jason Pascoe, I'm the Chief Operating Officer of High Life Farms. Lots of familiar faces up here today. I just want to say, first of all, that just based upon what you guys are going through, not only fantastic, but we've, from our aspect, we've had an absolutely fantastic experience through building departments, through the mayor's office and city council, and everybody's just been fantastic. So we've had a great success in doing, you know, what we've been doing here in Desert Hot Springs and we've been welcomed with open arms and I want to thank everyone for that, number one. That's been absolutely fantastic. You know, we just want to talk from, from an industry standpoint a little bit here today and, and I, you know, I won't get directly into maybe, oh, you know, better taxes. It is difficult to grow marijuana. It's a, it's a hard thing to do. You know, we're not new at it, we've been doing it for some time, so we've kind of got it, you know, dialed as best as anybody. But we have seen some failures in the desert already from a grow perspective, and that's concerning. I don't think it's necessarily because they have, you know, high taxes, but I think that from a city perspective, from the city of Desert Hot Springs, it's a wonderful opportunity to really build this community outside of really the tax dollars, if you think about it. I'll give you just anecdotally, you know, we have a facility in Michigan and we're in a very small town there. I had an opportunity to go to a lot of city council meetings there and went to one which is a budget, budget discussion. We quickly realized that their budget in this city of about 6,000 people is, was a little more than about $500,000 every year. That was their total city general fund budget, right? The cannabis businesses, which were only about, numbered about four at that time, accounted for an increase of about 20, 25% of their overall budget, which was wonderful, right? But more wonderful than that is, we have there a similar amount of employees, about 60 employees that we have there, which is the same number we have here in the desert. And what gives me great pride and gives us really, you know, heartfelt, you know, understanding of really what the business means is a majority of those people live right there in town. And we realized right away that those 60 employees put us... And we realized right away that those 60 employees put us as the number-one employer in the town, right? We are the biggest employer in town. And we give benefits, we give all those great things. Those benefits, you know, and people moving into town, even here, probably 95% of our employees are from Desert Hot Springs, which I think is absolutely wonderful. A lot of them walk to work, right? Ride a bike to work. They're not really capable of getting a car and then proper transportation. But it's really wonderful to see them sort of build up and come to work with a smile every day, and hopefully they invest that monies right back here in this community, whether it be eating at the local stores or buying gasoline and all the great things that come with commerce. So, again, just want to thank you guys a great deal for everything you've done, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. I have no other speaker cards. Is there anyone else that needed to speak today? All right, we'll close public comments, and we'll go back to discussion. We have approximately 20 minutes.
The question to you all is, with that public comment, what remains to be discussed? You know, we're looking for consensus, which is not absolute agreement to every element of this, but a plan is simply a roadmap. So what other items would you like to discuss, or do you believe are important to be heard at this point?
Well, I think this map is a good start to the future of where we're going, and it was very enlightening to hear from public comments that they haven't seen this anywhere else. So again, we're leading the way on strategic planning for the future. I also heard the person that said it's not fast enough because it's government. That's a frustration from all your council members up here a lot of times, but there's reasons for that. So we ask for your patience. But I'm thrilled in the direction we're going. I think you've got some consensus here on the continued movement, and I like the fact that we're looking at it from the 30,000-foot view, but now we're going to get into the 5,000-foot view by getting down to the initiatives and getting the actual details and being able to make some decisions in the future.
Other comments on this?
I'm back to wanting to get to it. We got the plan, that's good, but we haven't gotten into the nitty-gritty yet, and I'm ready to get there. But one of the things, and I don't know how this would happen, but I wanted to, is assuming we're going to take this on one thing at a time, I would like for the industry to have more than just public comments. We did get some good comments today. I'm going to take some of them with me when we discuss certain things, but I would like to have them talk as part of the discussion when we're choosing certain things. You may not like that, but that's what I want.
Could you guys bring up the PowerPoint? So, and the reason I say I like it is because it's completely in alignment with your guiding principles, right? And that vision and guiding principles were the first, call it hour, of our discussion back in October. And what you all talked about was, we want to integrate this in with who we already are, right? And there was talk around being careful. And one of the things that I recorded, and I don't remember exactly who said it, but it was open, supported, even-handed, and transparent, and then we'll work together for mutual success and competitive advantage. So what warms my heart about what you said is just that it's completely consistent with what you had said before and what I hear the industry wanting.
Not quite. We had people talk to us. We talked first, they talked. We're not responding to them. I'm talking about back and forth. Now, we may have to limit it, but we're not discussing. We're discussing here, they're telling us what they want, but we're not discussing.
Dialogue. Yep. So, I'm sorry, I have just a clarifying question. So, Ms. Pi, what you're proposing, though, is continued dialogue with the people who are growing the industry and doing that in a formal fashion?
Yes. With us.
Ms. Vala?
And I think for me, it would kind of depend on exactly how that's structured. What I don't want is for a council meeting, an official council meeting, to turn into, you know, all-out, you know, emotional, well, that's not what I like, and, you know, which kind of started to come out at the last cannabis strategy session with, you know, some outbursts. So that's kind of where I wanted to remain, like, very formal, because it is a formal proceeding, and we're going to be taking, like, official votes. I have no issue with maybe giving people a longer time to speak, or if a specific council member wants to ask somebody a specific question, and they ask them to come up and answer, that's fine with me. But what I don't want it to become is just so casual that people are just, like, talking back and forth, back and forth, and it just kind of spirals. Because at some point, you do have to limit that to move on with the agenda. But that's just my point.
Ms. Vala, what I was thinking, and I agree with you, was that when we first start, we're going to have a study session. That's where I want the back and forth.
Oh, during the studies.
When we get into council, we go back to the procedure.
Yeah, I feel more comfortable with that in, like, a study session.
Mr. Betts, closing comments?
Yeah, I agree with Councilwoman Zavala on the need for some order in the meetings. I think it's much more productive that way, and take the opportunity to, once again, compliment the mayor on a good job running this meeting. Sometimes it's like herding cats up here, and you do a really good job at it. The—I think the informal conversation can come, and I encourage industry to reach out to all the council members individually. You can talk to us, and I find that to be very valuable. I'm going to take a minute here just to get down into a little bit more detail than what we've covered here on specific proposals, since I've got my council members here and they can listen. I don't understand the difference between why this industry is so much different than any other industry that's out there. For example, we have a 10% retail sales tax on the dispensaries when the retail sales tax everywhere else is 7.75. Doria, thanks for getting that to me. I hope I got that right. 7.75. I would just make the retail sales tax on dispensaries at 7.75 now. I wouldn't wait. The—we have a $25 per square foot tax applied to the first 3,000 square feet, and that's hurting a lot of small people that want to come into this business. We're talking about social equity. There couldn't be anything more unequitable than having that huge rate on that. And I also think it hurts us from a marketing standpoint. You're talking about marketing here. I'm at a trade show, and somebody says, "Oh, you're that city with the $25 per square foot rate." I go, "No, no, no, no. If you've got a 50,000-square-foot building, it only works out to $11.10 when you average it out." But the perception out there, it's a marketing problem, and we're probably not getting anybody at 3,000 square foot, 25, so that should be cut immediately. Aggravating that situation is an automatic CPI adjustment that goes into, so we're not actually at $25 per square foot now. I think we're at $25, 25. Something, and it keeps going up, and I would think that would come back to the council each time, rather than it being an automatic adjustment where the council can decide, "Hey, which way is this going?" Rather than just automatically increasing, "I'm almost done." We didn't have much talk about security plans and what we can do to work with the industry on procedures that say, you know, they're spending heaps of amount of money on security, with armed guards, unarmed guards, whatever it is. Is there a way that we can get that done, accomplish the same goals, but do it for less money? And I like to see a robust look at that, and I'm going to say that I really, really appreciate what the city manager and the chief have done to keep this a safe and respectable and robust industry. So I don't take that lightly. I just think sometimes you can get the same thing done with less money, so I'd go there. And I'll reiterate, I would like to see, like, they do in other states, which is normal for economic development, to say, "You create so many jobs, and we'll give you this type of tax credit," and that would be the way to get to the goal some people are talking about. And then I think we've gotten there now, where we've heard on these plan-check companies now, that we've put two more in place, so it's not just one. And my understanding, they've got three in place now. So my understanding is now that you don't have to go to multiple agencies. For example, all of these new plan-check companies, for example, are capable of reviewing the California Fire Code and approving it. So there is no need to separately go to Cal Fire for plan check and inspection, and that should be able to just go to—I mean, every one of them understands not only the California Fire Code, but also the Riverside County modifications and anything specific to our city. So if anybody's shaking their heads that that ain't the case, it certainly could be and should be. There's no reason for separate plan-check inspections by two separate agencies, because that's really bogging down the process, and that needs to be straightened out quick. So that would be my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Gardner?
Just a couple—excuse me, just a couple of quick little things. I am really impressed with the end result on this, from both you and the staff, and having sat in on the original October session. I recognize a lot of what was discussed there in here. I am really excited to see that we're still standing in the forefront, and I think this keeps us there. I'm looking forward to a good, ongoing dialogue with the industry on a lot of these particulars in here, and I encourage you, and I know you'll all be talking with us as we move forward on all these individual little items on here. I'm just going to say, this is a great roadmap, and suddenly realizing a pun, let's start this trip.
With that said, we appreciate all of you coming out today. Greg, I'll give you the last word.
I'll just return the thanks. Strategy's a living, breathing thing. So you set a plan as best you can, and then you need to kind of curate that as you go. And as more information comes in, you need to make adjustments to it, and I would just encourage you to do that with the same spirit of openness that you've done to date, and I've enjoyed working with you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, Mr. Deputy City Manager, anything to add?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor.
At this time, we're going to announce closed session, and we're going to recess into closed session after the announcement. Ms. Marai?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have two items on for closed session. First one is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, paragraph one of subdivision D of Government Code, section 54956.9, in the matter of the administration of DHS drugs, Riverside Superior Court, case number PRIN 1801126. Second item is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, paragraph one of subdivision D, Government Code, section 54956.9, Garcia versus City of Desert Hot Springs, Riverside Superior Court, case number PSC 1807458.
All right, we'll be in recess. All right, we're going to come back from recess from closed session. We're going to our presentation period. It is 5:30 PM. Sorry for the small delay. Our first item on the presentation is the introduction and square in of a new police officer, and our police chief, Dale Mondari.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, council members. This evening, I'd like to introduce you and everyone to Officer Danny Garcia. Danny, you want to come up? Danny was born in East LA, moved to Chino at the age of 15. He currently resides in California with his wife, Adie Gonzalez, who happens to be a deputy sheriff with San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department, and I've already started my recruitment speech with her this evening as well. Danny attended Chaffee College, where he studied criminal justice, then went to San Bernardino Valley College Police Academy, where he graduated in 2014. For the last three years, he's been working with the San Manuel Department of Public Safety. Among the things that he's done there, he's been a field training officer, a bicycle patrol officer. He's also a post-certified instructor for bicycle patrol and helped get their bicycle patrol team established at San Manuel. He's also taken a course in active assailant responses, edge weapons trainings, as well as some other critical incident type of training. And again, he's joined by his wife, Adie, friends—you guys can wave or stand up if you would like, Jessica Gonzalez, Jeff DeYoung, who I think he works with, Christopher Hernandez, and Samira Sakiri. And so we're very happy to have him join our team this evening, and Gerald O'Roberta, who's going to do the honors.
Please raise your right hand. Do you, Danny Garcia, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
I do.
That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California?
I do.
That you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion?
I do.
And that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you're about to enter.
I do.
Congratulations.
Do we have a badge for you? Oh, here it is. I just wanted you to panic for a second.
There you go.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Yeah, it's good.
Congratulations.
Welcome. Thank you.
So it was a great moment when we have a new officer come aboard, and please be safe, and congratulations. Our next presentation tonight is from the Desert Blind and Handicap Association, Inc. Presentation by Barbara Workman. Good to see you again.
Councilmembers and community residents, my name is Barbara Workman, and I am representing Desert Blind and Handicapped. With me is one of my board members, George Holliday, who is our treasurer and also a CPA. Desert Blind and Handicapped has been in the Coachella Valley since 1972, and we are presently active in Desert Hot Springs, Palm Springs, Cathedral City, and Rancho Mirage. We provide free, door-through-door, transportation, five days a week, to anyone who cannot drive safely. 50% of our clients have orthopedic challenges, and 50% of them are blind. We take riders to medical appointments, grocery and retail shopping, senior centers, community events, et cetera. We have two paid employees at this time. I am one of them, and we also have one driver. We have a van and a car. Our van is equipped to carry wheelchairs and service dogs. We are able to schedule most appointments within a 24-hour period. This is a personalized service, door-through-door. For example, if I am picking up somebody from Desert Hot Springs and taking them to Eisenhower Medical Center, our driver takes them specifically to the building on the campus, to the appointment desk where they have their appointment, and picks them up within a 15-minute window. The same is true if they're going to the grocery store. It's a 15-minute window. They don't have to wait outside for hours till we pick them up. Our riders live off of the public transportation line, and that is— riders live off of the public transportation line and that is why our services are so very critical. Even if our clients were close to local transit, they may not have the ability to walk there independently because of health reasons or the weather. Our riders wish to live independently and our services most definitely allow them to do so. Because of budget constraints, we have not been able to hire administrative staff. We now have hired one new staff member and I'm it. My primary responsibility is to do community outreach and secure funding to continue our much-needed and demanded services. We are here today to ask for your assistance. Our Caltrans funding will run out in December of 2019 and we will not be funded again until October of 2020. I am continuing to market our services and we already have more requests than we can fill. As you can see, our need is funding so that we can continue our services. We are a trusted and reliable service in the community. We are dedicated to continuing our important work. Desert Blind and Handicapped is the only transportation of our type in the Coachella Valley. We are seeking your community's support to sustain our services in Desert Hot Springs. Thank you. And if you have any questions, we're both here to answer them.
Thank you, Barbara. She came and saw me in my office and I thought it'd be a great opportunity. I gave her some organizations here in the desert, including our senior center that would probably benefit from these services. So she's been going around and familiarizing herself with our community. I thought it'd be a great opportunity for her to be able to speak here and presentations, even though there's nobody in the audience, there's a bunch of people watching at home. Well, I'm sorry, Melissa, you are in the audience. But there's a lot of people watching at home and this plays multiple times for the next few weeks and this will actually reach out to a lot of our seniors that don't come to these meetings because they can't get transportation or ways here. So, but this is a great service, I thought. It's been around the valley for a long time and I think some of our Desert Hot Springs residents will really benefit from them. Any questions or comments?
You can go ahead.
No, you may.
Another place that you can apply to is the Regional Asset Access Project?
RAP, yes.
Yes.
I'm familiar with RAP. We have some brochures. I can leave them with the city clerk and she can pass them out to the council members. And I want to thank you very much. What I'm finding, because we haven't had administrative staff, is that some individuals and some organizations in the community didn't even know we existed. So I'm most appreciative to you, Scott, so let me have this form to share this with the council members.
Is it George?
Yes.
George, how does the CPA always become the treasurer on boards? I don't get this.
It's just the luck of their draw, I guess. No, actually, you know, a lot of these nonprofits, they rely on our field to make sure that they stay on track in a fiscal capacity. And especially with my firm, we really strive to be involved in the community and part of the way of doing that is board participation and giving our skill sets to these nonprofits, especially small ones like Desert Blind.
Awesome. Well, thank you for your service. Yeah, go ahead. Hold on, we got a couple more comments.
First, I want to thank you for your efforts. In a past life, I was in the Lions Club and spent time as a King Lion. As you know, their focus is helping the blind. This was back in Pennsylvania. And I learned a lot back then about how you interact with people who are sight impaired. And I put that to use up at the LA Metro. Incredibly, there's a guy who took the train from San Bernardino and was taking the subway. And there are people along the way that were giving him a hand, like you guys do. So he was kind of, I ended up being the person to help him. So he had his hand on my shoulder when we're walking through and he wanted to know how to get to the subway. Well, I didn't know there was a subway restaurant in the metro, in the subway, so I was taking him to the subway. Anyhow, it was, he was a real nice gentleman, very brave to be able to, it just always amazed me, you know, how somebody without any sight could actually take that drive. I had a hard time finding my way through the station anyhow. But you are making people's lives a whole lot easier with what you do. I doubt they could possibly express to you how much they appreciate what you're doing for them. And so I just want to thank you. And if there's anything that comes up down the line for, where we make some type of charitable contributions as part of our budget process, I would certainly like to have you folks in consideration for that. But anybody else out there, this is a very worthy cause if you have a mind. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
How many people do you currently serve in Desert Hot Springs?
Twenty-five percent of the people that we serve are actually in Desert Hot Springs. So that's, I think we have about 40 people in Desert Hot Springs now currently.
Forty?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Have a wonderful day. Thank you, guys. We'll be in recess till 6 o'clock. All right, ladies and gentlemen, if you could find your seats. We've got a hefty agenda tonight, so we're going to start it right away and get going. This is the City of Desert Hot Springs Regular Meeting of the City Council. The City Council serving as the successor agency to the Redevelopment Agency Board for March 19th, 2019. This is our 6:00 PM regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts?
Present.
Councilmember Gardner?
Present.
Councilmember Zavala?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Pi?
Oh, sorry.
Mayor Pro Tem Pi?
Here.
And Mayor Mattis.
I am also here. We're going to go in our invocation. We do have a member of the Ministerial Fellowship here in Desert Hot Springs. You want to introduce yourself, Todd? And he's going to give a prayer tonight.
My name is Todd Deliberto, Pastor of Caber Chapel, Desert Hot Springs. Thank you for having me. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you so much for this city, for its leadership, for this meeting this evening. We ask that you would be here this evening, that you would lead and guide this time, and that you would give wisdom to the leadership of the city, protection to law enforcement, fire, first responders. We just pray that you would have your hand of protection on all of them, that you would give wisdom, once again, to the leaders, lead and guide them in the decisions that they make, that this city would be led according to your will. And so we, once again, thank you for your blessings, pray that you would pour them out on this city, the community here. Thank you for the relationship that the city has with the Ministerial Fellowship. And we just, once again, ask for your blessings upon this meeting this evening. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. We'll now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mayor Pro Tem Pi, would you lead us? We'll now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, Mayor Pro Tem Pi, would you lead us?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now have a report on closed session from our city attorney, Ms. Marai.
We have no reportable action.
At this time, we'll go to the approval of the agenda, this will be us approving all items in order, including approving the consent calendar in whole. Is there any items on the consent calendar we would like pulled?
Move to approve the agenda as is.
Second.
Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on the consent calendar?
I have a question.
I see no one, yes.
County Service, item 17, County Service Area 152. I don't know what that is.
Mr... I'm gonna give a brief one, yes, we, we need a resolution so we can proceed with the actual taxation of it for October, November, when we come back with the actual taxation for all the city.
I think he's asking more where the district, where the boundary is on this?
It's the entire city, it's citywide, it's on the south, yeah.
Okay, based on it being citywide, then I'm fine, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So the agendas be approved in full, including the consent calendar in whole, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, move on to public comments, comments are, I'm sorry, at this time pursuant to the Brown Act, any person may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council not listed on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the city council shall not take action on or discuss matters raised during public comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council, and shall be devoid of any personal attacks, members of the public are expected to maintain professional courteous decorum during public comments. I only have one blue card tonight, so any items that are not on the agenda that you would like to speak to the city council about, I'll just need you to fill out a blue card, hand it to our clerk. The only speaker I have as of right now is the one and the only Mike Bacardi. And we brought a rooting...
I brought my fan club.
Yes, you did.
Yes, you did. Good evening, council, staff, city members, and citizens. I just have a couple of announcements tonight, as usual, classic music concerts, we have another one this coming Sunday, the 24th, 4:00 PM, Grace Church, 17400 Bubbling Wells Road, we have a cello quintet called Sakura, their name comes from the Japanese word for the cherry blossom, which has five petals on it, so that's where we get Sakura from, and they're pretty incredible, they were here last year. There was a postponement of one of the classical music concerts, it was the percussion that was up at the high school, the gentleman, excuse me, Corey Hills, wound up with pneumonia and wound up in the hospital the day before the concert, so that has been rescheduled, so we kinda have back-to-back concerts right now, the next one, that one is on Wednesday evening, it's an evening concert, one of the only ones that's in the evening, it's at the high school, March 27th, 7 o'clock, the Black Box Theater, and all donations at that event benefit the high school music program. The donations at the church will help the church, and also will help the concert series itself, these are both underwritten and supported by the Community and Cultural Affairs Commission, which is part of the City of Desert Hot Springs. We have Focus on Youth, which is coming up, I have some flyers here, if anybody would like them, I could leave them in the back, this Community and Cultural Affairs Commission is gonna be looking at making this group part of our city, with what they have planned and what they wanna do for our youth, March 27th, again, we have two things on the 27th, this one's at 6 o'clock, so maybe you can come here for an hour and then go up to the concert, 6:00 PM here, in the Calmay, everyone is welcome, as we come together for the youth to help with their education. And finally, last but not least, the Friends Bookstore again, Friends of the Desert Hot Springs Library is open this Saturday, every Saturday from 10 to 3, the address is 665808 Street, and if anybody would like to donate a space, next fall, we're gonna be looking for a new place, because the leases run out of where we are, so keep that in mind, if anybody's got any ideas, we're totally open to it. Again, thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you, Mike. We don't have any other public comments tonight, but I do see there's a group observing us, we're welcome, I'm not sure if you wanted to talk about your organization real quick, Family Health and Support Network, Jarvis Williams?
Hello, good evening.
They got it.
There we go. Hello, good evening, we are here, we are rites of passage, we are after-school, Afrocentric character building program, and one of the things we seek to do is help our young men develop their character, we believe that that comes by way of exposure and discovery. Many of our young men, particularly of African-American descent, are not familiar with how rules and regulations within their cities work, many of them have not had experiences and exposures to how things work in their city. So one of the ways, aside from the many things that we do do, is try to expose them so that they can begin to understand how things operate, so that they will go on to become productive citizens and contributors to their cities and communities, so we're just happy to be here this afternoon, we are located in Palm Desert, we service the entire Coachella Valley, we've been doing this for eight years, and we're just happy to be a part of your meeting today, thank you.
Thank you for coming, thank you for observing us, government can be a little boring sometimes, but we really think it's great that you're taking an interest in seeing about the city government here, so welcome. I have no other speakers, anybody else would like to speak about public comments? I see no, no closed public comments, move on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to say this evening.
All right, move on to mayor and councilmember reports, who'd wanna go first, Ms. Pi.
I attended the Palateers, probably like their 46th or something like that, gathering of Palateers, and it's interesting, you have artists that display their art, and then you have a person who is an expertise that tells you about the art, and I like going because I learn all the time, and I buy art, but I don't know what I'm buying, so now I go there and I do. Also, the Senior Center on the 13th had a fashion show, and I'm gonna tell you, some of you may wanna go to the Senior Center when they do events, because they're entertaining, for one, and the lady that did it is, was a fashion designer for the music studios, and she started from the 20s and went to, up to Janis Joplin, but in, but besides the fashion show, she also gave a history of all of the time during that time, and their next event is a spring dance, and it's on February 24th, and it's at 1:00 PM, and everything they do seems like a real kick, so I think that's gonna happen there, too. The Assistant City Attorney met with the people who want to do changes in the street design, the meeting went very well, they explained what the process of the, for us is, and I think it went really well, the city manager was also there, and I asked to be invited, and we had about four people, and it was a really good meeting, and so they're gonna come back, they're gonna look at the process, the Assistant City Attorney is gonna give them some information, so this will continue. 314 also, Barry Fried and our Tim Radigan became members of the Palm Springs Cemetery District, and the Palm Springs Cemetery District is having American Vets Post 66, American Legion Post 448, Veteran for Peace, Dedication Ceremony for LGBTQ Veterans Memorial. Again, this is the only memorial in the state, no, in the United States, it is open to the public, it's at 9:00 AM on September 27th, which runs into his thing also, at Desert Memorial Park on Deval and Cathedral City, and Edward Garcia will be there, and Chat Mays will be there, that's for you, no, not yet. 316, we attended Little League, and the best thing I can tell you about Little League, Little League comes by and they give you high fives. There was this gentleman bowed hip-high to me, that came, and instead of doing high five, he shook my hand and said it was nice to meet you, and he bowed, and I bowed back, and I just wanna tell you, chivalry is not dead. 318, Mission Springs Water District had their meeting, and they're discussing establishing and implementing elections by division, they had a presentation at their prior city council meeting, and they asked for a discussion at their next, not city council, commission meeting, board meeting, I'm glad you're there, and they will have further discussion at the next meeting. 321, Desert Hot Springs High School is having, what they call it, pass and review, and this is for ROTC, for the various schools, to show off their stuff for ROTC, and it's a very good event, so if you can attend, I don't have the time.
It's 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock. And lastly, the Desert Hot Springs, oh no, not last, the Desert Hot Springs Women's Club is having, on... Thank you, April 7th. April 7th from 12 to 4, Dylan's Barbecue, a pool pick sandwich, and if you need tickets, I have some.
She's got a whole handful up here, so don't be shy.
The very last thing, we have, on 6th and 12th, we're trying to start a park, and this may sound rude, but two meetings ago, about five people showed, the last meeting, two of the previous people showed. I don't participate, because I wanna know what you want about the park, so I'm there to get information. I don't want people to find out the park is being made and then have complaints about us, I don't wanna give you that opportunity. It's on 12th and Palm, and the next one is April 17th, they provide food, and they also provide childcare, so if you want a park on 12th and Palm, and where it will be will come up, but we're trying to get people to come to what will be your park, so please, don't have us decide what it's about, and you have not participated, I'm done.
Mr. Zavala.
Pardon me?
The time on you, 5:30 to 7:00 PM at Merr...
No, 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 there's gonna be 6:30 to 7:00, because, 6:30, 6:30 to 7:30.
No. Miracle Springs.
Miracle Springs.
Mr. Zavala. You want me to move on?
Well, I had a Coachella Valley Mountains Conservancy meeting, and yesterday I was asked to be a speaker for the Friends of the Desert Mountains, they have a free lecture series pertaining to hiking trails, and so they wanted us to speak a little bit about, you know, what the city, how the city prioritizes hiking trails, and kind of what efforts we have surrounding that, and so of course I talked about us wanting to be the gateway to the Santa Snow National Monument, we still have not forgotten about that, so it's very exciting, you know, it was good to see some of the other council members present from other parts of the Coachella Valley, and afterwards, they were like, hey, let us know how we can help, you know, we didn't even realize that Desert Hot Springs has the Santa Snow National Monument in your backyard, and we'd love to support you guys in getting designated as the gateway to the monument, so it's good to know that we have some support outside of Desert Hot Springs to make that happen, from some of our colleagues out in other cities. And on that note, I did wanna make a quick announcement regarding Proposition 68 grant, so the Coachella Valley Mountains Conservancy receives state funding, and they distribute it to local public agencies, like nonprofits or cities, and right now, they have a request for proposals, and it's really neat, because this year, they have some, some new features, so for example, they have a 20% set aside for disadvantaged communities that they have to fulfill by granting funds to disadvantaged communities like ours, so I think we should definitely be tapping into that, and they are also emphasizing projects that benefit communities that have historically been underserved by outdoor activities, so once again, that's something that we could tap into, some of the, some of the projects that they're looking to fund would be enhancing access to outdoor recreation, preserving cultural or historical resources, responding to climate change, and protecting natural resources through land acquisition or restoration. So as we think about, you know, the future of the city, and potentially having a visitor center in the future, I know that we're trying to figure out a way to create a really nice, detailed guide to all of the trails in the city, and we have kind of a rough draft of it, right, and so we kinda wanna update that, and be, you know, have more signage, and an actual pamphlet that we can give out to tourists and to local residents, so they know exactly where to go, and signage is actually something that would be funded through this grant, so we could actually submit a proposal to get some of these funds our way as we start wanting to build maybe trailheads, or put up directional signs to some of our local trails, it would probably help if we start actually giving them like official names, so that we know what they're, what to write, yes? Katie, hi, somebody, perfect. So I just wanted to put that out there, those proposals are being accepted right now, and then I also wanted, I also attended a Grants Review Committee meeting for the Regional Access Project Foundation, and we just recently had a League of Cities event out here in Desert Hot Springs, so it was, I know the entire council was there, and so it was really great to see that happening in our city, and us getting to showcase some of the projects that we have out here. And then with that, I also just wanted to say welcome to all the students that are here today, this is, it seems like such an intimidating process to be up here, and it seems so formal, but you know, honestly, it's really not, you guys could literally come up to this mic during public comment and talk about whatever you want for three minutes, and we cannot tell you not to do it, you could use that time to tell us, hey, you know, you have more, we would like more slides in our park, you know, because we really like slides, and that's what, you know, there's a long line, and you know, we need more of those, you could talk about needing a new football park, or whatever you guys want, it's your time to say, give us feedback on what you think is going on in the city, and what you would like to see, literally, three minutes, whatever you want, and we're just here to listen, and we can't interrupt you, so feel free at it, at the next public comment section, if you wanna come up and say something, we encourage you to do so, it's not intimidating, we're just here to listen.
You can talk about anything but the Angels, I'm a Dodger fan, so. All right, with that said, Mr. Gardner.
What about us Mariners fans, so?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. We did have that League of Cities event here, and it was really nice to see a lot of folks who would normally not come over to our side of the world, come over and visit little old Desert Hot Springs, and take a tour of our cannabis facilities, and learn about what's going on in the city, and it is an amazing event, and it was great to see a lot of people. I was really sad to miss the Little League opening ceremonies, I had planned to be there, and something had come up, I had to run some folks to the airport, and Little League is such a wonderful organization in this town, and it's so great to see them back up and playing, and it's a great way to spend a weekend and go watch a little baseball and have some fun, too, it really is a fun way to spend a Saturday. Attended the ribbon cutting for Bellamonte's Recovery Center, with an old spa up here in town that they've opened and expanded, it is an absolutely beautiful and well-needed facility here in town, and I wanted to welcome them. Attended the month... Attended the monthly meeting for the Coachella Valley Mosquito and Vector Control Board, otherwise known as the Bug Board. And it is the start of mosquito season, and they wanted to remind everybody that it is the start of mosquito season. So watch for standing water. And if you find standing water that stands around for a little bit longer than a day or so, which is hard to do with the amount of rain we've been having, to call them. And they'll come out and test it and treat it if needed. We did have one citizen in town let me know of a drainage ditch that wasn't draining. And we called, they came out the next day, they didn't find any mosquitoes, but they worked with the high school where the drainage ditch is to develop a monitoring plan and treatment facility. And so they're doing what they're supposed to do and keeping us all safe from viruses from mosquitoes. And on a last note, I just adopted a new dog. And so I've been spending a lot of time at our animal control facility going through the licensing process. And I just wanted to commend the chief and his staff there at Animal Control. They have a fantastic staff there, they love what they're doing, they're great, they're caring employees. And I want everybody to get their dog licensed. If you haven't yet, they have incentives to help you get them licensed. Licensing helps you, it helps them, it helps the dog, and it gets the dog back to you if it wanders out. And we do have quite a few wandering dogs out there. It's a pretty painless place to go, they're great about it. And I am very glad that the city took it over last year and brought it back in-house. You have a wonderful staff there, chief. That's all I've got.
Mr. Bets?
Okay, well, I do notice that half the room has a copy of tonight's agenda in their hands and is dutifully reading it, and that the other half of the room doesn't.
That's all the adults on that side.
I got somebody to laugh, okay, thanks. Anyhow, so welcome to our meeting and good to have you guys here. Attended the Southern California Association of Governments, the discussion was affordable housing again, and I continue to press our unique case on that issue. Attended the All Desert Aquatics Board Meeting last Friday. We had the League of California Cities event here, and I just wanted to take a moment to thank staff for making us look really, really good. When we were up there, I think Jan and I were up at the meeting when they said, "Well, what city wants to host it?" And we kind of looked at each other and says, "All right, let's volunteer us." And then staff just really stepped up the plate and put on a presentation for everybody from, you know, Inland Empire and beyond to come here. And so it really made us look good, thank you. Attended the Riverside County Transportation Commission as the alternate for the mayor. And, you know, I was really proud to be up there that day because I saw some funding coming to our city in no insignificant amount. It was on the list, and there was Desert Hot Springs along with all the other cities. And I know that that just doesn't magically happen. You have grant writing efforts by our city staff. And so for your work in getting that done, you guys brought home the bacon for the city in that grant writing. But I also know the mayor has been involved in the RCTC Riverside County Transportation Commission for a long time. And those hours and that time that you put in gets you to build up some relationships that get you on the list and get consideration from people to get us that money. So Mayor, you did a great job on that one, I was really happy to fill in for you.
Thank you for filling in.
And you did a great job on that. And the only other issue that came up was a big, long, hour and a half long discussion on call boxes. I won't get into too much detail on that, but the question is, does anybody stop and use the call boxes anymore? And should we continue to fund them or not? And it was 20 people in favor of continuing to fund them, and about 10 people say, "Well, no, they've gone the way of the payphones, so it's not spending more money on them." So anyhow, they'll be around for a while longer. Attended the Little League Grand Opening, it's really good to see all the kids, that was nice. What I noticed in walking around Wardman Park was, we've got a park that's in top-notch shape right now. I took time to look at the playground equipment, it's new. I looked at everything's properly painted, the grass is green, not brown, dead and crunchy. Staff's just doing a great job. I mean, that is a park, and I'm telling you, what was it, five years ago, you couldn't be so proud of that park. And, you know, mentioned it to our new administration, the people have here, and they said, "Well, we can't have a park that doesn't look good." And so we don't have a park that looks bad. Now we have one that looks great. So Chuck Maynard, thank you very much for your attention. And Danny, I know you did a lot of work there, and it's fabulous. It's just, you really feel proud to walk through our parks. I think all of them have now been redone, is that correct? Yep, so there we go. There's stuff just getting checked off the list, right and left here, it's just wonderful. I had a complaint from somebody that said they're having trouble, they were handicapped, wheelchair, having trouble getting into one of the bus shelters. And it was one down there by Stater Brothers. And somebody had pitched one of those canopies where they're, you know, the vendor. And incredibly, they put it right where the bus pulls up. And I don't know if you're familiar with the buses, but they pull up and then they lower down for somebody that's handicapped. And then they come out to this nice, big, wide sidewalk area. Well, somebody had pitched a table and a chair and a canopy and, and so I think we got that resolved where our city staff has gone in there and said, "Hey, you know, that's just not something you can do." So I just, to me, it was just incredible that somebody would be so uncaring and so indifferent, especially when somebody in a wheelchair had such trouble, they couldn't take a direct route out, they had to go out and around. And they just made no effort to do anything. So I know we have to allow that sidewalk vending, but it's going to be a challenge in the city as more and more people compete for safe space to set up their vending. And they just, they weren't thinking. And then, of course, they're using the trash can at that facility when they're done with their commercial waste and just putting it into that trash can. So if anybody else wants to use it, it's full. And there's a real problem, we're going to have a policing effort on that one. Got a new restaurant starting up in the old Sidewinder, and they're busy working. I stopped in there yesterday. I don't want to take too much wind out of their sails, but they're planning, I don't want to steal their thunder, as sort of the saying goes, they're planning to open in eight weeks. And I guess staff's doing all they do to get them through the approval process. But it's really nice to see this young couple putting all this energy and love into a new restaurant in the city, so that's good. We got Grocery Outlet was approved by the Planning Commission, that doesn't come to us, right? That's done? It does come to us? Oh, so it's a public hearing?
I would check with the Planning Director, but I believe the Grocery Outlet, it was just a conditional use permit, I don't believe it goes to the City Council.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Oh, good, then I can comment because I don't want to prejudice the public hearing, but it was good job Planning Commission, it was nice of you to approve that one. We're looking forward to that. And in case you're wondering, that's going in just south of the Kmart Shopping Center. And other than a be sure you attend the Women's Club event at Dylan's Burgers and Beer. What was the date?
April 27th.
I forgot to write that, April 27th, that's a good one, you won't want to miss it. They got a band that'll be there. Huh?
April 7th.
April 7th, see, I had it April 7th, and so I just wanted to double check there. Anyhow, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thanks.
I didn't remember the date, so. So real quick, the California League of Cities is an organization that we belong to, helps advocate for our needs here at cities in the state of California. We host a dinner, we're optioned to host a dinner every once in a while. We've done it twice in 12 years I've been on the City Council, this being the second time. And I just wanted to thank Roberta and Doria and our city manager and staff for all the efforts they put into it, it was beautiful. We were able to highlight one of our cannabis facilities and give some tours to other cities that are really interested in cannabis moving forward, so really well done. I was asked to speak by the Early Act, which is a Rotary program for the youth in our community at the Bella Vista School. The only reason I'm saying this is because they had two choices. Chief, do you remember who their first choice was?
I apologize, I'm just...
Their first choice was to either have the police chief speak or myself, and they picked me over the police chief, and I wanted to brag a little bit.
That's why I tuned that out.
Yeah. Anyways, now it was very nice to speak to some, I believe they were third graders, and they were, just they had lots of questions about the community, so it was fun. But I just wanted to brag a little bit that they picked me over the police chief. Did I say that already? Oh. Spa City Palateers, they do a lot of our artwork here in the Carl May throughout the community. They have an event each year, it was a fantastic event. I was able to run in and run out real quick and do a welcome. We had multiple events that day, but it's always something I like to stop in. I don't know a lot about art, but I do know there's a lot of passionate people with art in our community, and so I always try to support them as much as possible. And Mayor Potem Jampayo's there with me. Ribbon Cutting, I went with Mr. Gardner, Councilmember Gardner up to the Bella Monte. It's an older spa that was renovated back in the early 2000s and then turned into a recovery center. They just opened four more rooms for detox, and they wanted to do a ribbon cutting and show their support for the community. They have some interesting ideas to help our community in rehabilitation. And so we're going to be moving forward, Mr. Gardner and I, and some opportunities there. Most people know, I've been a longtime member of Desert Hot Springs Little League, coach, umpire on the board for a few years. And so we always welcome the City Council out there on opening day. It's always fun because they do what Ms. Pi said was the parade of players where they all go along and give you high fives to all the dignitaries. So it's always great to see, another about 400 kids playing Little League this year. Park's in great condition, and we're really looking forward to a great season. As Mr. Bets alluded to, he stepped in for me at Riverside County Transportation Commission. We had so many events that day, I thank him for that. Big discussion on the call boxes because they've been actually getting rid of them every year. What happened this last election is there was a lot of turnover in elected officials. And each city in Riverside County has a seat along with all five county supervisors on the Riverside County Transportation Commission. It's new news to a lot of newly elected people, so it became a little more contentious, and I should have warned Mr. Bets about that, that a lot of items have become a little more contentious because you have a lot of people that are newer to the board. But they've been talking about decreasing the amount of call boxes because of cell phone use, but there are still quite a few areas in Riverside County that don't have very good cell service in. So that's the main discussion, I'm making sure those boxes are still available for emergency use on the freeways. If you don't have anything to do on the 28th, I don't know if there's any seats left or tickets left, but the Rotary Club here in Desert Hot Springs is holding the Big Heart Awards. This is an opportunity for members of our community to be given awards in our community. Also, on Monday, there'll be a mural presentation at Ed Winsloth Education Center. I point this way because it's right above us. There's some artwork that's being presented through the school. And if you have nothing to do on April 7th, there's a barbecue, right? All right, we got that date right. With that said, that's all the comments I have. We're going to move on to our administrative calendar. Our first item on there is number six, which is award construction for the new city hall project. This is going to be, this report's going to be given by our Public Works Director, Daniel Porres.
And Mr. Mayor, before we get too far along, this new city hall is within 500 feet of a business that my wife and I own, I own it, 12084. And so I'm going to recuse myself.
Thank you. We'll wait for Mr. Bets to leave the dais, and as soon as he does, Mr. Porres, the floor is yours. Mr. Bets is off the dais.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In February of 2017, staff completed analysis of the city's administration offices. That included reviewing, purchasing, renting, leasing the vacant buildings, utilizing city-owned buildings, purchasing vacant land for new construction, utilizing city-owned vacant land for construction, and various options for various construction types of new buildings. At that city council meeting, council selected utilizing the city-owned building and vacant property located at the northwest corner of Palm Drive and Pearson Boulevard. The city-owned building is what currently is housing the city managers and city council offices. At that meeting, council also authorized to proceed with the architectural design of the new City Hall complex. Excuse me. The new City Hall complex is located on northwest corner of Palm Drive and Pearson Boulevard. The complex includes a brand-new infrastructure for the construction of a new parking lot, new storm drain retention basin, overflow parking, a small outdoor amphitheater, new landscaping, the utilization of one existing building, which we completed tenant improvements and some facade improvements, and will be housing the finance department. We're in the, also the construction of a new building, which will house a new council chambers, an emergency operations center, customer service counter, a customer service lobby, a conference room, study session room, city council offices, and city staff offices for planning, building, fire, public works, engineering, code compliance, and the city manager's office. Here's a aerial rendering of the City Hall complex. I'm going to start on the bottom southeast corner, that's the existing admin building. This is the corner of Palm and Pearson, Palm goes east and west, I'm sorry, Pearson goes east and west, Palm goes north and south. The existing admin building is where the city manager's office and city councils currently exist. If you go north, there would be a small amphitheater. If you continue going north, you would have the main entrance to the new building, which will house all the city staff and the council chambers. And then if you go west, you have a new parking lot on both the west and the south side, western and the south side of the actual main entrance. Here's a few other renderings of the future building and the existing building. You have the new building and main entry, and you have the existing admin building at the corner of Palm and Pearson. Here you have the view of the main entry to the new building. This is a rendering of the small outdoor amphitheater that would be between the existing building and the new building. Here's renderings of the outdoor area surrounding the new building. The street view on First Street. This is the view of a customer service lobby area where we would have the front counter for the various city departments, building, planning, engineering, public works, and so forth. The entryway, which would have a wind guard for our winds. And then the customer service area where we would enter into the council chambers. This is another view of the council chambers. This is a rendering of the council chambers, would also act as emergency operations center if there was a need. Here's another rendering of the actual dais and how the setup would be. Looking behind the dais to the audience. And here's a view of a sample of one of the conference rooms that will be inside the building. In order to complete the project as fast and as timely as possible, the project was divided into three phases. The first phase will utility underground, which was completed in December of 2017. The second phase was the completion of the parking lot improvements, which was completed in April of 2018. And now the third phase would be to complete the construction of the new city hall building, which we expect to start this month of this year and completed by February of 2020. The request for proposals, in May of 2018, the city issued a request for proposals, and in June, the city received seven bids. All of the bids exceeded the engineer's estimate and the overall project budget, therefore all the bids were rejected. In August of 2018, city council authorized to proceed with architecture and value engineering of the plans. In January of 2019, January 27th of 2019, city completed the architectural value engineering and reissued a new request for proposals. The bid opening was on March 15th of 2019. The city received 11 bid proposals from various contractors. MTM Builders, Robert Clapper Construction, ChemCorps Construction, Rao Investment Corporation, Abu Diamond Construction, Desert Concepts, Hamel Contracting, CWS Systems, Archico Design Group, Design Build, Ferris Construction Company, Tolkien Sons Construction. The bids ranged between 4.5 million and 6.6 million. During this process, city staff, the architect, and the engineers reviewed all the bids. And during the review of the bids, staff did receive two bid protests and one request to withdraw a bid. At the end of the review, staff concluded that all bids that determined that MTM Builders, which was the lowest builder, was non-responsible based on the incapacibilities of the contractor who fully performed the contract requirements. Therefore, staff determined that the lowest responsible qualified bidder was Robert Clapper Construction Services Incorporated. Let me just go back, so Robert Clapper Construction was actually the second, but was the lowest responsible bidder at 5.38 million dollars. Staff is recommending to award a construction contract agreement to the lowest responsible qualified bidder, Robert Clapper Construction Services, Inc. And to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for the new City Hall, new City Hall project number 2019-03 with Robert Clapper Construction Services in the amount not to exceed 5,880,000. Also approve an additional project expenses, which include a 10% contingency of 508,800, as needed material testing of $20,000, as needed special inspection services of $10,000, and as needed certified payroll services of $30,000, which will bring a total project budget of 5,656,800 and 0 cents. Here's another rendering, I have questions, and we do have a quick, about four-minute video of just a flyover of the 3D rendering that STK, our architects, completed. This is the two buildings, this is the future amphitheater between the existing building and a new building. This is the main entry to the new building. As you can see, we do have a windscreen in front of it. This would be entering into our lobby area where it would house the building, planning, public works, engineering department to the left, and then to the right, you'll have the council chambers and... council chambers and restrooms available. Our front counter would have an extended counter, and it would have a handicap counter on one side. You can see the restrooms and the chamber entrance on the opposite side. This is a rendering of our council chambers and our emergency operations center, which And right here, we're coming along First Street. This will be back to Palm. I think after this, it's going to go back to still images. Yeah, just continues to go around.
Thank you, Drew. That goes with Mr. Effery Park. Glad to answer any questions.
Well, first, I'm thrilled. We all have been looking forward to this for a long time, and unfortunately, last year ran into a little hiccup with the process. And I was very impressed with our staff being patient and not pushing to spend as much money as we could have. Going back to the drawing board and coming up with this great plan. Most of you know that most of our staff is still in construction trailers, which were temporary over almost 13 years ago. Economy went bad, we had no way out of it for a long time, but the innovative ideas from our current staff have really brought us to this process. Now, I've heard rumors, and I don't know if true it is, that city halls of this size could cost cities somewhere between 15 and 20 million dollars, and we're doing it for less than 6 million. So again, kudos to our staff.
Ms. Savala.
I have a question regarding the amphitheater. So in one of our initial renderings, I remember it actually looked more like an amphitheater, where it had like this dome and a stage where people could perform. I was wondering kind of what happened to that, because now it looks like it just has the seating component.
It does have a seating component. I believe in the value engineering, we did redesign some of those portions of it, but it does have capabilities of expanding it. That's just the seating portion of it. We can definitely expand in the future, but we do have to just be cautious of the cost, actually, on that one.
So was, it was eliminated due to the cost?
That might have been. I don't remember the exact details of the original design. I'm not sure maybe if city manager remembers the design details of the original one.
Yeah, we still have the stage. You just didn't see it in the photographs or the video. The stage is still there. It's going to be all powered and with lighting and everything else. The orientation of the seating may change because of the way it was set on the video that's a little different. It was originally, as you remember, built into the difference between the height of the city hall and the existing administrative building, because it was a 13-foot drop from First Street down to Palm Drive. And so that had to orient it a little bit. I don't remember a dome being over it. I know that there was a...
It's like not over it. It was like, it was like, kind of like this, and then like the stage was like right here.
Yeah. Oh, I see what you mean.
It wasn't like covering it.
The backing you at the stage?
Yeah, it was like the back part. I think it was because of the wind.
And that can be added on. That's, I just think they didn't include that in the photographs there, but that could be added on. That's not a big expense, because that, what that is, is a sound wall. That's what you're talking about, right?
Yes, the sound wall.
The half-moon sound wall. Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just think if it's not a huge expense and we could do that, and it was in our original kind of rendering for the city hall, I would, I would like to see it, only because then we actually have like a full stage where people could go and perform, you know? So I just think it would be nice.
Yeah, no, that's not a problem. We can talk to STK about that. We've already talked about the orientation of the, where the seating is. We want to make sure that, and it probably will stay in that direction, because we want people to come from the city hall complex to sit there. We want the bandwidth that's back to the street. And the reason for that is, is that we don't want to have it oriented the other way, where people, the kids may get away from them and, you know, run out into Palm Drive or something like that, so.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Mr. Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a well-needed project. I'm really happy to be on the council when we're approving this. The cost level is amazing. It's not a Taj Mahal by any means, that I can tell. We're not, we're not turning this into Rancho Mirage or Palm Desert. And it's about time we got out of those trailers, because those trailers are an embarrassment to the city. And to have people have to go into those trailers, almost fall through the floor, get blown out by the wind, and the temperature changes and all of that, our staff will definitely appreciate this. I know our citizens will appreciate that. Just a couple of quick questions, Danny. On the, on the customer counter area of that, does that have all city services, like animal, you know, you'll get your dog license there or anything else, or does that stay with animal control, or will all city services be in that central location?
Yeah, we will have building, planning, engineering, public works, animal would still remain at the clearing location, as far as I know.
It's going to get your license and things like that, so that'll, that'll still stay there. Are, is, do you feel our timeline is a little, a little ambitious on this? If we start in March, having it done by a year from now?
Yeah, we're expecting about nine months, so we should be done. The latest details, the ones that might take a little bit, but yeah, we're expecting it to be done in nine months.
Okay, great, thank you.
Ms. Pye?
I just wanted to state that there was thorough reference checks for each of the bidders, and so far as physical impact is concerned, the funding for the construction and in addition, as needed services will come from the 2017 and 2018 bond proceeds totaling In the capital improvement fund 222, and once approved, staff will make any necessary budgetary adjustments as needed for this project in the 218, 219, 219, 220 budget. Without reading the rest of it, we have planned for this. It's like he was asking, can it be done in nine months? It's not about the money. We have thoroughly planned for it, and we're not taking it out of general funds, and we're not taking it out of cannabis funds. So I just wanted you to know, we're solid on this.
Open it up to public comments this time? Would anybody like to speak on this item? Scene one, I will allow. Mr. Bacardi.
Mike Bacardi again. I want the amphitheater to be bigger, but other than that, I really like the wall in the council chamber for art, and I'd really like to work very closely with the city with art in public places funding to see how we can do to assist and help any way we can and figure out who's going to make the decision on the art. But I think it's a fabulous program, a project, and I think it's well overdue. And I'm glad we're moving forward on this. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this item? All right, we'll move, I'll accept the motion this time.
I'm moved.
Second.
Let's move staff recommendations, one and two. Any other discussion? Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Would someone call Mr. Betts back in the room?
Mr. Betts enters the room. This is item number seven. This is continued from the May 5th, 2019 meeting. This is the appointment to the Community and Cultural Affairs Commission, also known as the CCAC, to fill the vacancy for unexpired term, and this is Mr. Betts's term. Mr. Suriyan, anything you need to add to that?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Mr. Betts?
You know, I just want to say that the applications I got were, there's a lot of really qualified people in this city that want to serve in that position. And I had a conversation with one of the applicants that, when I hung up, I looked at the phone, and I think we had talked for 45 minutes. And this person's very, very eager and interested and participates and didn't have to ask if they show up to meetings. They explained to me that not only do they show up at the meetings, but they detailed what took place at just about every one of them. It's almost as if they were already serving on that commission. So Donna Wardine, I would be honored if you would accept appointment to the CCAC.
Second.
All right, there's a motion by Mr. Betts. There's a second by Ms. Pye, and we will take public comments from anyone but Ms. Wardine. Oh, I'm joking. You are absolutely already there. This might be now.
It is. It would be my honor to serve. Thank you so much for nominating me and pointing me, pointing me, pointing me.
I'll make that as a formal nomination then, and...
And a formal second has been given by Ms. Pye. Any other public comments on this item? Please vote.
Look forward to good things from you. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
You have your quorum, Mike.
Mr. City Clerk?
This is unanimously.
Thank you for the record. All right, move on to item number eight. Resolution of the intent to create a special tax area zone 38 for property APN 663-280-002, located north of 14th Avenue, east of Little Morongo Road, to Desert Hot Springs Special Area, Special Public Safety Area Tax Area. That's Finance Director Linda Kelly. No, she's not here. Jeffrey, you're here.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor pro temp, council member. This is Jeffrey Buckheim, Finance Manager, sitting in for Finance Director Linda Kelly. The approval of this resolution is create a special tax zone, tax zone, and to establish a meeting for Public Safety Tax Area and Police and Fire Protection Services. The developer, Green Bond LLC, is moving forward with a cultivation project located on 2.5 acres of land near Little Morongo Road on parcel number 663-280-002. The city recognizes the need to ensure that there is continued delivery and high-quality public safety services for fire and police, and requires all new development to pay for the increased demand of services placed on the city for these projects. The conditions of approval for this project require that the developer establish this tax district and costs associated with the levy, and that levy has, its costs have already been paid by the developer in an amount of $5,000. The developer put in a $5,000 deposit. The annual tax for this zone will be $751.51 per year, once approved, and the public hearing for this zone is scheduled to be May 7th, 2019. We also have representatives from Webb Municipal Finance to answer any questions as well.
Anybody in the public would like to speak to this item? I see none. Mr. Betts, you in the queue?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for staff. This item is item eight, and it shows that this parcel is in the proximity of Little Morongo and 14th Avenue. And if I look a little further ahead in the agenda, I see we got another parcel that's also in the vicinity of Little Morongo and 14th Avenue. I'm just curious as to why we have two separate taxing districts in the same area, and why we haven't gone and instead of putting ourselves through these gyrations, create one taxing district for that whole area, and then anybody vote to annex into it rather than to create a new and special one? And I know I've asked this question a bunch of times, and I don't know if we're getting any traction this time, but I'm going to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to send this back, tell staff to go back, create one uniform taxing area for that entire area, and then come back to us with this one done, so that we don't end up with 350 separate, individual, parcel-sized taxing areas.
There's a motion on the table. Anybody like to second that motion?
I'll second.
Hold on. We've got to get it up on the screen. There's a motion on the table by Mr. Betts. Would anybody like to second this motion? Second call for a second on the motion. Final call for a second on the motion.
I'll withdraw my motion to make it easier for the system.
Motion is withdrawn. Is there, did I ask for public comments on this? No one? All right. Well, no one else in the queue? Are you done, Mr. Betts?
Yeah, I think I'm done.
Ms. Pye?
I move for staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion and a second on there. Any more discussion? Please vote.
I gotta try and decide how to vote on this, dang it.
Motion passes. Would Councilmember Betts oppose?
Item number nine is a resolution of intent to create a special tax area zone 40 for property APN 641-251-018, located north of the 14th Avenue and west of Palm Drive, to Desert Hot Springs Special Public Safety Tax Area. Is there anything different on this one besides the location or the APN?
The only thing different is the location APN, and this is related to the developer quick quack development and the car wash on Palm Drive.
Thank you very much. Is there any public comments on this? I see none. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion passes. Would Councilmember Betts oppose?
Item number 10 is a resolution of intent to create a special tax area zone 41 for property APN 665-030-051, located south of 14th Avenue, east of Little Morongo Road, to the Desert Hot Springs Special Public Safety Tax Area. Location and order?
It's a different location. It's the parcel number 665-030-051, 14,000. The developer is Lenwood Hospitality Center, and I'd also like to point out that Zone 41 and Zone 42 are both Lenwood Hospitality Center, and they are adjacent property parcels.
Thank you. Any public comments? Entertainer motion?
Move staff recommendation.
Please vote.
Motion passes. Would Councilmember Betts oppose?
Item number 11 is a resolution of intent to create a special tax area zone 42 for property APN 665-030-052, located south of 14th Avenue, east of Little Morongo Road, to Desert Hot Springs Special Public Safety Tax Area. Jeffrey, you already explained that this is the parcel just adjacent to it, right?
Yes, it's a parcel adjacent, and it's the same developer as Lenwood Hospitality Center, LLC.
Any public comments? I see none. Entertain a motion.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So we have two adjacent parcels, but two separate tax districts? Okay.
Should we get an explanation?
Accepted a motion? Oh, do you want an explanation?
No, I've got it.
Okay, got it.
I saw somebody shaking their head, yes.
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
Motion passes. Would Councilmember Betts oppose?
Item number 12 is award a con- Item number 12 is awarded contract for Zone 1 and Zone 2 Landscaping Maintenance and Operations Services. Mr. Porres?
Mayor, before we proceed, it appears to me that from the map that I have financial interest within proximity to this zone, I think it actually includes the development that I live in, Sunset Springs. Do I have that correct, staff?
Let me check.
Desert View, Desert View, maybe not. Foxdale. Skyborne. I'm in there, right? Okay, so I am going to recuse because I have home in, within 500 feet of this project.
Wait for you to leave the dais.
And Mr. Mayor, Nick Hecker, Public Works Manager, representing this.
Okay. All right, Mr. Betts is off the dais. Nick?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Administration, and Staff. I'm Nick Hecker. I'm Public Works Manager. I'm recommending award, awarding the landscape maintenance and operations service contract for Zone 1, Desert View, and Zone 2, Desert, West Desert Hot Springs, or Desert, yeah, to the most qualified bidder, Mariposa Landscaping, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between Mariposa Landscaping and the city of Desert Hot Springs for Zone 1 in an amount not to exceed $71,184, plus the 10% contingency of $7,118.40. And Zone 2, an amount not to exceed $116,952, plus 10% contingency of $11,695.20 for landscaping and lighting, drainage, and community facilities districts and other site maintenance. We took, in an effort to produce a more productive landscape program, we took existing LMD and DAD districts and divided them into four groups, which are our zones, which is Zone 1, Desert View, Zone 2, West DHS, Zone 3, Midtown, and Zone 4, East Desert Hot Springs. An effort to utilize best practices, we did this because of more focused scope of work for the contractors, so we could get a realistic bid, lower costs based upon unique design or unique zone requirements. For instance, some areas have more grass, some areas have more desertscape that require more weeding, some areas, it was based off of design, so we could group it together. This is also used to encourage new bidders. Maybe some zones don't require as much work or mechanical work. So the idea would be to have a potential of having four individual contractors for each zone, or one contractor for each zone. And this is a good backup plan if contractors overpromise and underperform. We've had a history, the Valley's actually not, we're not unique. The Valley's had this issue where contractors commit, they find out they're not making money, and they walk off, or we still have a service to provide to the citizens. So this is a good backup plan. Zones were developed by grouping LMD and DAD districts based on geographical locations, so you don't have contractors driving back and forth throughout the city. They're in one area, and it's centralized. And it's also, again, unique design based off of the scope of work. We want to make it easier, more efficient for them, so it's a lower and more efficient bid for us. On December 22, 2018, we put out a request for bid proposal for all four zones. We utilized the city website, local newspapers, Planet, Repro graphics. On January 10, 2019, we had our mandatory pre-bid meeting. And this is where we went into detail and understanding of the RFP. We let them know that we were asking them to submit references and past projects, submit staffing qualifications and resumes, and submit staff schedule per location. We also asked, we also reviewed the scope of work per zone. And we also reviewed in detail the selection process and scoring, emphasizing on best quality. On January 22, 2019, we received four bids for, one for, or four for each zones, for all four zones, and staff reviewed and scored each proposal for each zone. The zone, the scoring process was 20 points for understanding and expectations of the RFP, 20 points for contractors' experience, prior experience, and 20 points for contractors' onsite staff qualifications, 20 points for providing a complete staff work schedule, and 20 points for the bid cost. After reviewing and scoring, the most qualified bidder for Zone 1 and Zone 2 was Mariposa Landscaping. Staff is recommending that the city council award the landscape maintenance and operations service contracts for Zone 1, Desert View, and Zone 2, West Desert Hot Springs, to the most qualified bidder, Mariposa Landscaping, and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement between Mariposa Landscaping and the city of Desert Hot Springs in an amount not to exceed $71,184, plus a 10% contingency of $7,118.40 for Zone 1, and an amount not to exceed $116,952, plus a 10% contingency of $11,695.20 for Zone 2 for landscape and lighting, drainage, community facilities districts, and other site maintenance. If you have any questions, free to ask. We also have a representative from Mariposa Landscaping that was able to come out here.
Is there any questions on this contract? Any public comments? See none. I'll entertain a motion.
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
Other comments? Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. We'll also be taking item 13 without Mr. Betts. That's going to be downtown, so I'll recuse you for you. Award contract for Zone 3 and 4 Landscaping Maintenance and Operations Services. Nick?
All right, we're recommending awarding the landscape maintenance and operations service contract for Zone 3, Midtown, and Zone 4, East Desert Hot Springs, to the most qualified bidder, Desert Concepts, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between Desert Concepts and the city of Desert Hot Springs. For Zone 3, amount not to exceed $166,092, plus a 10% contingency of $16,609.20. Zone 4, an amount not to exceed $46,392, plus a 10% contingency of $4,639.20 for landscaping and lighting, drainage, and community facility districts, and other site maintenance. So this one's set up almost exactly the same way. The only difference is because it does deal with citywide medians, we're going to subsidize $105,000 from the general fund to provide service to the parks and to the citywide medians. Same thing, we broke it down into four zones. The reasoning for going with Desert Hot Springs specifically, or the reason why we're going with Desert Concepts specifically was they have been maintaining our LMDs, and after doing the review process, staff determined that these two locations, Desert Concepts was the most qualified bidder. Staff is recommending that the city council award the landscape maintenance and operations service contract to Zone 3, Midtown, and Zone 4, East Desert Hot Springs, to the most qualified bidder, Desert Concepts, and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement between Desert Concepts and the city of Desert Hot Springs, an amount not to exceed $166,092, plus a 10% contingency of $16,609.20 for Zone 3, and an amount not to exceed $46,392, plus a 10% contingency of $4,639.20 for Zone 4 for landscape and lighting, drainage, and community facility districts, and the other site maintenance.
Any other questions for Nick? Any public comments?
Actually, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'd like to point out that the $105,000 subsidy is in addition to the already $100,000 that the general fund already contributes to the citywide landscaping district.
Thank you. Any questions? Entertainer motion?
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. I'm going to grab Mr. Betts. Since he returns to the dais, we'll move on to item number 14, Annual Housing Element Progress Report. This is our community development director, Rebecca Demming.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The government code mandates that all cities and counties submit to their legislative bodies an annual report on the status of their housing element and progress to its implementation. The State of California Governor's Office and Planning and Research, and the State Department of Housing and Community Development will receive a copy once this is approved by council. I have included, as exhibit one, the entire report on the format as prescribed by HCD. And I included a summary showing that we have 37 homes that were entitled, 45 permits were issued for residential units, and 41 units final. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any public comments? I see none. I'll take any comments from staff or from council. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Move staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 15 is the last item on the agenda tonight. This is the appointment of a delegate and alternative delegate for the 2019 Southern California Association of Governments, which is also known as SCAG General Assembly. I'll make the motion that Mr. Betts be our delegate, as he pretty much is the one that attends most of these meetings. Is there anyone that would like to fight over the alternate? I will possibly be entertaining one day at that conference, but I won't be able to attend all of them, so. Anyone want to be the alternate?
I will.
Ms. Pye? All right, that was easy. Mr. Betts, Ms. Pye, are you okay with that?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Does anybody would like to speak in public comments on this item? Not seeing any. Someone put a second on there. There we go. And please vote. Where is it located at this year?
The desert Marriott, along the river.
Marriott Springs?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The one in Palm Desert?
Yeah.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. I don't know how we did it, but we did it in an hour and 15 minutes.
What did we do?
No future agenda items. Anybody didn't speak in public at the beginning would like to speak now or forever hold your peace?
Do we have more time for council member comments?
With that, we're adjourned.